Good evening, welcome to the Select Men's Meeting for September 23rd, 2014. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could I get a roll call, please?
Carolyn Smart, present.
Colleen McNabb, present.
And Sue Lysio is present. We're going to start a new tradition. If you'll join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hoping that that sets the tone for all of us. I'd like to announce that the meeting is being tape-recorded. 1.4, Chairman's additions or deletions. We have a few additions. Hate to do that to anyone who has to stay around. There's an additional 3.5, 3.6, 3.7, and 4.4. So some liquor license, a Unitil request, a contract, and some appointments for the fire EMS. 1.5, Board of Selectmen announcements, updates, reports.
I had a couple. I didn't have any announcements to read. There was nothing to announce, right?
No.
One of the things I wanted to bring up, and I had brought it up at a couple of meetings, was the building, the school building. Rich Hanks had actually done a spreadsheet that showed the increase. I know we haven't had a chance to talk about in depth, but I was hoping we could have a discussion under the warrant about potentially establishing a revolving fund to put the permit fees into.
Actually, Andy and I have talked a bit about that because I'm the representative on the Building Committee, and I believe Andy and Kim and Rich are going to be getting together and coming back to us with recommendations or presentation or whatever.
Well, I was just worried because our town meeting warrant is coming up.
All right. Well, why don't we talk about it a little bit more when we talk about this?
Okay. That's fine. You can add it under there.
Okay.
And then I'm sure that we're going to be getting a pipeline update tonight, but I was hoping the Board would support with the recent filing, sending our resolution to FERC with a cover letter, letting them know of our decision.
Yeah, Andy, you going to give an update on the meeting from yesterday?
Yes.
He and I both went to that meeting in Paprow.
Okay. That's all I have.
Colin, did you have anything?
Nothing, Seaton.
Okay. Andy?
Yeah, a couple of things. With respect to the pipeline and the pipeline company, Kinder Morgan filed what is called the pre-filing with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, FERC. Pre-filing is an opportunity for the pipeline developer to get some early feedback on the project, begin the, or begin a sort of new phase of the public relations component of the project. I haven't had a chance to go through the entire packet that they submitted. However, it turns out that Townsend's going to be affected more significantly than just by the pipeline itself. It looks like they're proposing a compression station in town. The compression station is for, I'll call them, and I don't say this to be alarming, we'll call them jet engines that move the gas through the system. And the entire site of, or the entire size of the compression station site is somewhere between 50 and 75 acres. So it is massive. And we don't know, I don't know yet because I haven't had enough time to go through it all. I don't know exactly where it is in town, but it appears to be in Townsend's, and so we're looking at that. The company, Kinder Morgan, is hoping to get the pre-filing accepted by FERC by the end of this month, which is next week, next Tuesday, I think. In the coalition meeting that we had yesterday, we talked about asking FERC to delay the formal acceptance of the pre-filing, give us additional time to get, sort of get mobilized and get comments to them. One of the concerns, one of the primary concerns that we have is the mapping that they've used for the project to date goes back to 1988, goes back to the old, what I would refer to as the old, although it's the most current, USGS, US Geological Survey maps for the area. And they use those apparently all the way from Pennsylvania to Drake. A lot has changed in 30 years, 34 years. So one of the requests that we'd like to make of FERC is to tell Kinder Morgan to go back. There's plenty of more accurate data, more current data that's available, mapping data. Much of it is free, especially in Massachusetts. We have great geographic information systems in Massachusetts. If it's not free, it's easily accessible and not prohibitively expensive. So we don't have a lot of time. We have to move quickly. What I, and I think Carolyn's idea of sending the resolution is an excellent one. What I'm planning to do this week is to put together a letter to send off to FERC asking that they not accept the pre-filing, that they keep that period open for another month. Carolyn Sellers, a resident of Townsend, active in town, also a landowner in another town that is potentially impacted by the project, sent a letter out almost immediately after the pre-filing was done. And so a lot of us are, were at the discussion yesterday at the coalition meeting, and sort of use that as a kind of a template for moving forward for our own letters. So I know it's short notice. I don't have it drafted yet, so I can't ask the Board's blessing in advance, but I would ask that if the Board is comfortable with me sending it off, I can do that either under the Board's letterhead, or I can do it under my own letterhead, whatever your preference is. But it's what I'd like to...
I personally would like it on our letterhead, and even if we have to come in and sign I think it's important that we do that. Do you happen to have a copy of that, the coalition letter? I know it was to be revised slightly. But perhaps people would be interested in that as well.
All right. Don't forget. Oh, yeah, I do. It's not final, but...
It's a draft. There were a couple of little tweaks to it yesterday.
Yeah, I see some handwriting. I'll try and decipher, but...
But it, no, you can just, I mean, it's just, this is coming from the coalition, which is the group that we formed with several other towns. They're at the, are they on the top? No, they're not on the top of that.
Oh, they're not on that one, no.
No.
I have it here. I can read it out.
Okay. This is the draft letter. The purpose of this letter is to assert our rights as cities and towns, and to enlist your support in assuring that those rights are upheld. Our coalition is comprised of duly-appointed representatives of the towns listed on this letter, including elected members of Boards of Selectmen, town administrators, and other town staff. Our mission: to gather knowledge and work collaboratively to provide representation and information to relevant government and public bodies concerning the Tennessee Gas Pipeline Project proposed by Kinder Morgan and its effect on our communities. Currently, 32 towns in Massachusetts and New Hampshire and a number of business groups have passed non-binding resolutions opposing this pipeline. We are asking you to play a vital role in ensuring that the citizens, taxpayers, and energy ratepayers of the Commonwealth have an opportunity to be heard in the upcoming deliberations before the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, FERC, on this pipeline proposal. Specifically, we are asking you to conduct formal public hearings as soon as possible through both the Joint Committee on Telecommunications, Utilities, and Energy, as well as the House and Senate Committees on Post-Audit and Oversight. The hearings would take testimony from interested parties in request, and this is where you have a lot of handwriting here, both a thorough environmental analysis on the cumulative environmental impacts.
Sorry, Andy, I can't read your...
You can just read what was originally proposed.
As well as a comprehensive economic analysis of the cost, construction, finance, and alternatives to meet our energy needs, efficiency, energy routes. All of this information is necessary and must become a part of the public record in the eventual draft environmental impact statement in order to ensure a fair and open FERC process that allows for real discernment and careful consideration of reasoned alternatives to the Tennessee Gas Pipeline Proposal when the final EIS is crafted. Many of us feel the process thus far has not been in the Commonwealth's best interests. FERC appears predisposed to approve any project that increases system reliability at the expense of reasoned alternatives. We need your assistance in making the Commonwealth's best case. The State Department of Public Utilities will have an important intervening role before FERC and could place alternative arguments based on the public hearing into the record as part of the required draft environmental impact statement process. We believe this would carry tremendous weight with FERC. It is critical that the DEIS reflect a full range of alternatives in addition to those presented by Kinder Morgan. These might include alternative routes that reduce harmful environmental impacts, less intrusive solutions proposed by other pipeline companies, and demand-based and alternative energy solutions that would address our energy needs with the infrastructure we already have. We, as representatives of the citizen who reside in our towns, believe that our citizens have a right to both examine the FERC process and have sufficient time to challenge the criteria used in such a process. We believe that due process as declared in the Constitution of the United States must be observed. We appeal to you as our representative and declare that you have the duty to protect us from federal agencies using flawed processes that could harm our communities. Hearings as described would go a long way towards affording us some level of protection. We urge you to hold them as soon as possible.
Now, this is, Andy, this is going to the Legislative Committee?
Correct. It'll go to Senator Donahue, State Senator Donahue, because she is on the Public Utilities Committee. It will also go to Representative Harrington and others, other senators and representatives. Representative Harrington, rather, is on the Post-Audit Committee. They have among the broadest powers of any of the Legislative Committees, including the power to subpoena. So we thought that it was, the coalition thought that it was important to bring them into the fold and get their support. And they've all been very supportive, so.
And in addition, we're copying...
Everybody.
Our federal folks.
Congresswoman Songus, I think Congressman McGovern out of Worcester...
Senator Markey.
Has been contacted. Senator Markey, and Senator Warren, and others. So basically, everybody that we can reach out to, we are reaching out to.
And I urge you to do the same.
Yeah. We'll be putting some more information online. There's a fair amount of information on our website. We'll be updating that this week as well to get some...
Another thing that they talked about, too, was the whole FERC process includes...
Town meetings.
Town meetings.
Open houses.
Area open houses.
Not to be confused with the open house that's going on tonight at the high school.
Yes. And we talked a little bit about that. We don't know when or where yet. We will let them know to expect large crowds, if it's anything like what we've seen so far.
Yeah, and I was talking with Steve Thimelis from Paprow yesterday during the meeting about, you know, where, who's got the space to hold one of these open houses? And I think they're doing a dozen of them throughout the route. I think we're going to be looking at something like UMass Lowell, or Middlesex Community College, Ma'atchuset, Pittsburgh State. None of the communities have the kind of space that we would need unless you're going to have it on the football field, and that's probably not very conducive to a meeting like that. So it's going to be, logistically, it's going to be challenging, but it's a critically important issue for the communities. So I think that's all I've got on the pipeline. I've got a couple of other quick ones that I'll try to go through quickly. We talked last week at the work session about the West Townsend Reading Room. I met out there last week. Mark McCaro and I met with Paul Jussom and the carpentry instructors and the carpentry students. They're getting going right away on the ramp for the West Townsend Reading Room. So that'll take place this fall. They've actually, I mentioned last week, I think, that their students had been focused on a project on campus. They're going to split the group. There's really just sort of punch list items and finish work over there. So they've split off another group of six or eight students, and they're going to work on the ramp. So that'll get going shortly. The, I don't know if anybody's noticed, the Bernie Blood Memorial, there was an article in the paper the other day, the Civil War monument on the common has been restored. Roger Repose at the Cemetery Department applied for a grant through the sesquicentennial commission, 150th anniversary of the Civil War, received about $3,900, and it was about $6,000 in local funds that were put towards that, too. So really cleaned it up nicely. And then last, we've got some road projects going on. Spalding Street was ground down this week. They'll be putting a finish coat on that in two weeks, binder course in two weeks, top coat first week in October. And then next week, they'll be, yeah, next week, they'll be working on Emery Road. They'll be grinding that down, reclaiming it, and then paving it a couple of weeks later. There will be a detour on Emery, so you'll be routed around. Anybody who travels Emery Road on a regular basis or any of the streets off, you'll be directed down Tyler Road. So there's just not enough lane width there to allow for traffic while they're grinding. So, thank you.
Andy, on the West Townsend Reading Room, are we going to start the bid process for the siding and windows then, or?
We can. I want to make sure that we make good enough progress on the ramp and so that we get that done. But, yeah, we can start to work on that.
Can they give you a timeline? Because I...
I think it'll probably be, I'm hoping by the end of October that it'll be done.
Okay. Approval of meeting minutes from September 16th, 2014?
I would move that we approve the meeting minutes for September 16th, 2014.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Appointments and hearings, 7 o'clock, and we are late. Worcester Regional Medical Reserve Corps.
Lois, come on up.
Thank you. Any place in particular you'd like me to go?
I'll take the front row.
Okay. I brought an enlarged map of the region, and some business cards, and some brochures of our organization. And I'd like to thank you all very much for allowing me to come and meet with you this evening. You obviously have a lot of business, so I'll be as brief as I can be. First of all, I'd like to just ask, how many of you are familiar with the Medical Reserve Corps? If anyone? Okay. So following 9/11, as you may recall, there were many people who rushed to New York and Washington because they wanted to help. Doctors, nurses, rescue, emergency managers, everyone wanted to help. But no one knew who they were, even though they had licenses on them. There was no way to verify that they were who the license said they were, or that their licenses were current. So looking at this afterwards, the federal government felt that if there could be an organization of volunteers who were already quarried, already had their credentials checked, had already received some minimum training, and were just ready to go in an emergency, then when they showed up to help, they would be recognized and they could be trusted that they are who they said they are. So the Medical Reserve Corps was born, and this was probably about 2002, 2003. So this is a federally-recognized volunteer organization. I've recently learned that there are 1,000 units across the country and 200,000 volunteers nationally. In this area, there are currently three Medical Reserve Corps units, and they all came into being about the same time in 2006. We work under the auspices of Boards of Health traditionally, and we receive our funding federally through the Mass Department of Public Health, and ultimately through the Public Health Coalition, of which Townsend is a member of the Worcester Regional. So when this whole thing started in 2006, because the Worcester Regional Health Coalition operates as a 74-community group, that's how they wanted the Medical Reserve Corps to run. And we tried that at first, other than Grafton had their own, Ma'atchuset, which was originated in Hubbardston, had a handful of communities. But three coordinators later, in a period of about seven or eight years, we determined that, like most other responding organizations, you really need to have a small and more cohesive group. Ideally, you have volunteers who have trained together, drilled together, and participated together in community events. So we, I say we collaboratively, we were on the MRC Advisory Committee, and we took a look at how we could take those 74 communities and split them up into geographic areas that made sense, and then appoint a coordinator or a division leader to oversee each one. And it took about six months because we wanted to recognize collaborations that already existed between communities. So ultimately, we ended up with the map that is in your brochure but blown up that I left at this end of the table. And that is why I'm here tonight, because Townsend is part of my division, which is the Northeast Division. It's comprised of 13 communities, many of which are actually part of Middlesex County, not Worcester County, even though you fall within the Worcester Public Health Coalition. And except for one community, Northborough, all of the communities in the Northeast Division are also part of the Nishoba Associated Boards of Health. So we are always seeking volunteers, and our name is deceptive. We kind of wish they hadn't called us the Medical Reserve Corps, because many people who are interested in helping are afraid to sign up as volunteers because they think they have to be medical. But what we found is that for every medical volunteer, we actually need three non-medical volunteers. We can help out during emergencies and non-emergencies. So we could come and help to maintain a shelter, if you had to open a shelter. We could assist with flu clinics. Many of you remember back a few years ago to H1N1, when people were having clinics in schools, at public events. Some organizations were actually going into businesses to hold the clinics. It takes a lot of volunteers to assist with that, and that would be where we would step in and help out. We can also participate in non-emergency civic-type events. For example, I know you recently had your annual arts festival, and I was not able to attend that event. But if it were a really large event, sprawling many acres, where you needed additional volunteers to help with traffic control or to set up a first aid tent, that would be something that we also would be able to do. So my purpose in coming here tonight is just to make you aware that we exist, we have been around. But fortunately, since the ice storms in 2008, our area has been fortunate enough to be somewhat quiet in terms of natural or man-made disasters. So individuals who knew we were around a few years ago kind of thought we had disappeared because we've been kind of quiet. But we are still here. We are willing to help. And the great thing about the Medical Reserve Corps is that because we are a national organization, for example, during the ice storm, many of the local volunteers were impacted. So we actually had Medical Reserve Corps volunteers who came into central Massachusetts from the Boston area, for example, to assist because our own volunteers were unable to do so. How you become a volunteer is we have a data management system that was actually purchased with grant funds by the Mass Department of Public Health, and it's maintained by the Mass Medical Society. So we ask our volunteers to simply log in, create a profile, complete your query and source information. We have a process in place that processes those, as well as checks any pertinent credentials. And when all of that is okayed, then you become activated, and all deployments, for the most part, would take place using the Mass Response System. That's also how I communicate with my volunteers, when I'm seeking volunteers for events, or if I just want to give them information. We offer free training to our volunteers throughout the year, things like Incident Management System, National Incident Management, Personal Protective Equipment, First Aid CPR, Psychological First Aid. And when we can, we offer some trainings that are a little bit not regular, like last year, we offered a training on radiation. So it's a great organization. We are here to help you. We want you to consider us as one of your partners in emergency preparedness. I've had the opportunity in some of my communities to sit in on some of their local emergency planning committees, to meet with their emergency management directors. I'm also reaching out with Council on Aging, and I'm actually going to be setting up a table at your upcoming Recreation Craft Event on October 18th. So I look forward to working with all of you and ask if you would have any questions for me.
I appreciate you meeting with us. I did have one question you brought up at the end. So you work pretty closely with the emergency managements in our area?
We definitely do try to do that as much as we can.
Because we have a pretty large organization. They actually run our shelters for us if we were to have an ice storm or something along those lines. So definitely want to set you up.
I've had the opportunity to attend one of the, if I get this right, Northern Middlesex Area Emergency Preparedness Group. I'm going to be going to the next meeting in October. I've also met and attended an event here with your representative as well. I want to try to get to know some of these people a little better on a more personal level as well.
Yeah. Definitely get in touch with our director, Shirley Coit.
Absolutely.
She'd welcome to help.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, just have one other question.
Sure.
I know you said you receive funding from the Department of Public Health, Massachusetts Department.
Yes, correct.
And who, and where else?
Actually, the monies that we receive are, actually come from the Health and Human Services on the federal level, and then they are funneled through the Mass Department of Public Health.
Okay. All right. So federally funded?
We have, right. We have fairly limited budgets. None of us are getting rich doing this. It's really just, really a way of, an incentive to make sure that we can keep our volunteers engaged.
Andy, maybe we could just put a link on the website?
Sure.
How about that?
That would be wonderful.
So if anyone has any questions, they can go to our website and find reference to the Worcester Regional Medical Reserve Corps, and we'll supply the link to their website.
That would be great.
I'll pass the information on to Shirley at Emergency Management, as well as our chiefs, and anybody else that I can think of, Board of Health.
That would be great.
Anybody else that would make...
I have actually met with your Board of Health back in the spring, and they encouraged me to come and meet with you as well. And my other reason for coming tonight was just so that you would be aware that I'm in and out of your town. So if somebody comes up to you and says, "Who's this MRC person that I've seen here or talked to there?", at least you would know who I was and why I was here.
Okay. Thank you so much for coming.
Well, thank you very much. It was a pleasure meeting all of you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lois.
Have a good evening and a great meeting.
Thanks.
Thanks. Moving on to 2.2, continuation of public hearing on petition of Unitil and Verizon to install two utility poles on Boutel Road, beginning at pole number one and continuing approximately 345 feet northerly. Have my little checklist.
And there is a, there's a revised map in front of you that Jim D provided to us. And Jim is here tonight. Jim from Unitil is here to talk about the plan and and what has changed and where we go from here.
So, the hearing was actually opened on 8/12. And and then it was continued to allow for site work and clarification. And I guess you guys have been working on that?
Right, yeah. Yeah, I'm Jim D with Unitil. And I did meet with people out there, Leslie from Conservation in the West and Karen Hill individually. And we went over where I I stayed, two both, two pole locations. The first pole, the original pole, is is hasn't changed. The second pole, we shortened the span 45 feet. So, I thought that was a better location. Go from that pole to the third pole, or the pole on the west property, with less tree disturbance. So, that's basically all that's changed, is the second pole location was moved by 45 feet. Conservation didn't have a problem with where those two poles were located. And I think the Abotters didn't have a problem with those, but they can speak for themselves. And.
Yes.
I don't think all the Abotters have been notified. Lee and Mark Miriam, 64 Middle Road.
They have been notified.
Okay, so that happened in the past week?
Yes, they have.
Okay, great, thank you.
And I guess the other thing is, you know, if these get granted, and stuff, we can work, our forest staff can work with the parties involved on tree trimming out there as well.
Okay. So, let's just make sure we're clear on the letter. Because this is a continuation. Did the letter, the second letters go out?
I sent, I sent a letter. I was made aware that the Abotters list that we get aren't always updated. And so, I was made aware that they hadn't received one. I sent them the original letter with a cover letter stating that the continuation would be.
Okay, thank you. So, at this time, I'd take anyone in support, opposition? Yes, Mr. West?
Hi, Andy West. I'm here with my parents, Mary and Ed West. I just wanted to ask him, what's the span from the last pole to the to the pole number three?
I didn't measure that, but I would say it's probably like 150.
185 is your max, right?
Right, correct, yeah.
Okay. And just like to reiterate my statement that the wires have been there for more than 60 years. My folks have owned the owned the property for 60 years, been more than 60 years. And there's, there's got to be some kind of statute of limitations or something that, and we feel that the project is is unnecessary.
Can I ask a question? May I consider an Abotter if I'm across the dirt road, across Boutel Road? I have not yet seen the revised map.
Okay, I can give you a copy. Are you 66?
I'm 66, middle, yeah. I haven't seen this.
The first pole was on the left going down the road. The second one's on the right.
We did have type of district.
Yes. I haven't seen this. Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes, you may.
There's, there's something on my property which was built by the CCC during the Great Depression.
Water hole.
Yeah, so it's a water hole. They were built, I don't know how many of them are left in town, but it was a CCC project. How close to the CCC which, project, which I consider to be of some historical significance? How close is the pole to that?
That is on the right side of the driveway. We're going to be on the left side.
Lined with stone.
Yeah.
So, we're on the opposite side of the driveway.
You're on the opposite side of where we're from.
Right.
Do you have any other question?
No. Okay, thank you.
I mean, what, I understand the West's concern, but there isn't a statute of limitations on something like that, right?
I don't believe so, no, I don't believe so. The, and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong. Unitil does not have a, an overhead easement?
Correct.
For, to travel over the, over the land? So, you know, it's, I suppose it's never, it hasn't been a problem to this point, but the property owner is trying to get it corrected.
So, it sounds like the property, whomever has owned it up to now, didn't have a problem with it. But they do now, and you don't have the right to to keep it there.
Right.
I understand your concerns, Mr. West, but I don't know if this board can do anything about that. I mean, we can't tell a landowner that they can't ask for something to be moved that doesn't have a right to be there. It's, it's almost like they did it because, you know, whomever owned it in the past wasn't concerned about it. Now, the current owner, for whatever reason, is concerned. So, I don't think Unitil has any choice. Were you okay with the revised plan in terms of the trees and and the less disturbance to the trees? I know that was one of your concerns at the first meeting.
The, Jim's done a fantastic job of minimizing the tree removal and trimming. So, we're, the plan is acceptable.
Okay, all right. Anyone else for or against?
I just wanted to ask, Leslie from Conservation. I know at our last meeting, you were going to go out and view. I just wanted to know Conservation, I know Mr. D said they didn't have any issues, but you confirming that?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I would ask for a motion?
I would move to approve the telephone petition hearing on behalf of Unitil for Boutel Road, beginning at existing pole number one, continuing approximately 345 feet northerly, installing two poles.
Second.
Just a clarification, it's a joint pole.
Joint pole, it is, I'm sorry. Joint pole petition of Unitil and Verizon, New England.
So, you're taking that right from the the letter? You okay with that motion, guys? All right.
Yeah, it's right on here.
Second.
Second, been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? If not all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And so, I would move to close the hearing. We've just seconded to close the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
2.3, Council on Aging Director Ed Snap, Chairman of the Screening Committee, will be present to discuss the recruitment of a Council on Aging Director. What period?
Join us.
Well, I'm just. Hi.
How are you? Yeah, we've selected another person. A person from the list of the original four that we had brought in for discussing their qualifications, et cetera. And this person that we've selected from that list, since the other two are out of running by their own means, is Karen Camfield Moore. And out of the four, she was right in the top running. So, that's our choice. I've had two meetings. A meeting with the Selection Committee. And we voted on her again. And then convened another meeting with the Council on Aging. And told them what the new selection was. And then followed up with another meeting with the Council on Aging, coupled with the Screening Committee. And then brought Karen in a half an hour later, predetermined time, so that we could ask her more questions. And and I could present her to the board. In both of, in all of the meetings, the, it was unanimous for the Screening Committee. And again, unanimous for the Board of Selectment when we put it to a vote. And one of the things we've learned, or some of the things we learned is that she's got some real interesting, fun ideas. I think they'll be good for the seniors, no, really. And that'll push, that'll push us forward. And I'm, I'm pleased. I'm happy with this.
That's great, wonderful. Can we get a motion?
Well, I did, I did have a question.
Oh, we can put a motion on the floor, and then you can ask your question.
So, you're asking to appoint Karen Camfield? Okay. I would move to appoint Karen Camfield Moore to the position of Director of the Senior Center. Is there probationary period where she's an existing employee?
It's your standard probationary.
Well, she's existing, so I wasn't sure if that was something you had discussed.
And what do we usually do in a situation like that?
Trying to think of what we've had for comparable scenario. I would say no.
She is existing.
Since she's an existing employee, there's no need for the typical pre-employment.
She's already went through probationary period, so I would agree with that.
Okay.
So, again, I would, I'll start over here. I would move that we approve the recommendation of the Council on Aging to appoint Karen Camfield Moore to the position of Director of Senior Center.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any questions, Carolyn?
Yeah, I had actually spoke with Ed. And I know when this originally search started, came up, I had said, Mass General Law dictates, to me, my opinion is, who, you pick who you want. So, your selection is your selection, and I stand by that. My only issue is a couple of the screening members had come forward and said that the qualifications and needed experience in the posting did not match a lot of the resumes that were received. So, I'm asking you, did Karen Camfield Moore's resume meet the qualifications and experience needed? It was posted saying Bachelor's Degree in Human Services, Geriatrics or Related Field, Master's Degree Desirable, at least five years of experience in human service management or any equivalent combination of experience and education.
You should also, well, she does meet the criteria, but not to the letter of that. Also, also, it says preferred. And sometimes you can't have preferred.
I agree with you 100%, and I think your selection is accurate. My, I would like the position posted, reposted, because we had a few issues wrong with it. We had, it was posted for overappropriation. And it was posted with those qualifications and experience needed. This has nothing to do with your selection of Karen. That could still exist. But to repost it legally for 10 days. The other thing, too, is I did have a chance, I knew we had spoke. I went through the job description. And the job description actually has much less requirements and qualifications needed. And I think that's what should be used.
Carolyn?
My feeling on this is it's a, it's been gone through the Screening Committee. It's gone through the Council on Aging. They've selected who they want as their director. I have no issues moving forward.
I feel the same way. They appointed who they want, had nothing to do with your person. It has to do just the posting.
Then why, why do I need to repost it? I would repost this if we did not have another individual who was qualified to select from, who already was interviewed, all right? We made selections 1, 2, 3, 4, and that's, that's where it was. And I see no reason to do that. If, if we were turned down again by the selection, like we were with Timberley and and.
Deborah.
Who? Oh, yes, right, Deborah Thompson. And and if Karen turned it down, then I'd have to go back and have it reposted for another 10 days and then go through this process once again. Now, I gave, I, I put before my boards, both of them, two caveats. One was to do exactly that, okay? Second was, I can go to the well, and I've got seven more individuals in there. Six that we did not interview because we felt they were too out there, to be honest with you. And then Karen. Okay, well, no, I'm just letting you know. There were six plus Karen, that's seven. I still had individuals. And I also did not dissolve the Screening Committee. So, everything is still in place. Now, we made another selection. I'm ready and and have been ready to present you folks with that.
Again, Ed, it has nothing to do with your selection. It has nothing to do with Ms. Moore. This is, to me, when you post a position and states you needed qualifications and experience, that lets people know what you're looking for. People that don't have the required qualification experience, they, they shouldn't have actually been put into the pool. Or you should let them know that it's not needed because a lot of people may not have applied, thinking they had to have those things. So, to me, it's only a legal and a, and a fairness issue. Hold on, hold on.
First of all.
It's okay.
You can talk to her.
What I'm hearing is that you have no problem with their selection.
You know, it's their choice.
Okay. The other topic, which is whether your suggestion is to repost. If you would like to make that a motion, then we could vote on whether or not we should repost.
That's fine.
Let's withdraw the first motion, just to keep it clean, okay? Or or just put it on hold, okay? So, your motion for this reposting, which would end up delaying the hiring?
For 10 days.
Okay.
I would move that the position be posted with the correct needed qualifications and experience and the correct appropriation.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I ask a question? What is the correct appropriation? Because we didn't, we didn't identify an appropriation amount. We identified a salary range, which is typically what we do.
Well, that the hours that the job is with the range, the hourly range that you have in there is over the appropriate amount in the budget.
The posting says the position is currently 35 hours a week. Hours may be expanded.
So, in your, in the posting?
That's what the posting says.
You have up to 24?
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter.
Right, that's the salary range.
Well, that would be over the appropriation, so if you...
That's the salary range for grade six.
But that is not what's in our budget. That's not what's available in our budget, otherwise they wouldn't be able to hire their first choice.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. The motion does not carry.
So that I would, you want me to make a motion to approve the appointment, because I drew that one?
Yes, please.
I would move that we approve the appointment of Karen Canfield Moore as the council on aging director.
Second.
Been moved in seconded to appoint Karen Canfield Moore. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
No.
Two ayes, one no.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You're stealing her honor, huh? Very difficult for me to say, no, you can't have her. Congratulations, Karen.
There's a glass of red waiting for me.
Can I come up here?
In the car?
No, not in the car. You know, there's, there's laws against that one.
Okay, 2.4. Unitil, John Denapoli Municipal Pool and Community Services Manager for Unitil will be present to discuss Unitil's tree trimming program and the West Townsend Substation. Where are you, John?
He's waiting in the side. He's trying to get through the door.
How are you? Full agenda.
We assume that.
We okay? We okay, guys?
Yep.
All right, let's keep going, please. John, welcome.
Well, thank you.
Welcome. So the first thing that you wanted to talk about?
Tree trimming.
Tree trimming.
So for those that don't know me, I'm John Denapoli, the Municipal and Community Service Manager for Unitil, based out of our Pittsburgh office. Andy had called me probably four weeks ago, give or take, about this topic and the other one that'll follow, and what I'd like to do is introduce the folks on our team that can talk more about the tree trimming issue, as they're the professionals in the firm that do that. Sarah Sankowich, Sarah is our system arborist for all utilities in the Hampshire, Massachusetts. We have Dave Clapham, Dave is our forestry supervisor here in our Pittsburgh office. Allo Mare is our PR manager, media manager for, for Unitil. And Doug Patterson, Doug is representing Lewis Tree Service regarding the situation that we get the call on, on Ash Street. So, I'll turn it over to Sarah, but I would say if you have a question, we can respond to your questions, how they come up.
Well, just to explain what happened, it's like right across the street from my house, so it was hard for me not to notice, and Andy had happened to be dropping off my packet that afternoon, and it was, was uncomfortable, because the poor tree that they had out in front of their house is not looking quite like it was before. And the concern that we had was that they had not been notified that it was going to happen, so obviously something didn't happen right. So I'd just like you to explain.
Do you have an issue if I?
Sure.
Well, I can, I can speak to this incident. Bottom line, there was a process that we follow protocol, and it, it wasn't followed. The homeowner was not, was not notified. Typically, the, the standard for us is to myself or another supervisor to go ahead and notify each homeowner, either person, face to face, or we would leave a, a notification, notification door hanger with my contact information on the card, and they, they would give me a call back, and we could further discuss the specification that we'd be trimming, what the options are for the homeowner, and, and just any other, any other questions that they might have. And that, that did not happen. The, the, I, the crew did not do this maliciously. They were working in an area nearby, they have a copy of the circuit map, and they just veered off to another area. And we did, discipline action, discipline action was taking place. I did speak with, with Jim and Karen, and I apologized for the miscommunication, and bottom line was, we do have a process, and it was not followed.
Well, I appreciate you letting us know that. Appreciate that you went back and talked to them as well. Can you just explain one other thing on, on the tree trimming? I know that they're supposed to get, you're supposed to get permission, and what if someone wants to have the tree trimmed at their own expense, with their own arborist? Is that something that...
Well, if...
That gets done. Do you know what I'm saying?
No, I...
Yeah, at this time, we, we don't offer that as a possibility, only because we have the integrity of our electric system to maintain, and we can't guarantee that they're going to be adhering to the standards that we need to maintain from the wires. And we do provide a service to them, it's, it's not at any cost, and we have professionals that are trained, you know, arborists that are working around the trees. And when we do the notification, we do have a point where we can discuss the tree and anything that they'd like to see, and we can talk about how it's going to look after, and unfortunately, that part was missed. So usually, when you get to that point, we can talk about it, we can find out what their needs are, and we would be able to perform whatever it is that their own private tree company would be doing. But unfortunately, we didn't even have the ability to do that at this point, and that's why we do have the process in place, to talk to all the customers beforehand. And we do have an evaluation process on our end, overseeing our, our vendors, so that we can partner together and make sure that it doesn't happen. And if this were to be happen, to be happening frequently, then we would not be partnering with them, which is why, you know, Doug is here and, and really wants to show that, you know, it's something that he takes seriously, and we want to hear all the concerns of everyone here about it. We don't take it lightly that it was missed.
And I think on top of that, too, it's a safety issue, that someone like Doug and his crew, as well as Ask One Another, is their utility tree trimming. So they are qualified individuals to be working by our power lines, where somebody else that is not qualified, you don't want them here.
But you wouldn't have a problem if, if they wanted you to come out, for example, and, and help to...
Yeah, we often...
If somebody were to, to say, gee, I'm concerned about that, how far back are you going to take that piece, or...
Yeah, Dave often goes out on a lot of calls and speaks with customers. Sometimes it even requires me to come out and take a look at it as well, if there's some discussion about, do we really need to trim that much, and what's the tree going to look like?
Okay. So people have a right to, to say, give the permission, but ask for some, for some special conversation around it? Okay, that's good information. Yeah, one to mention, too, the maintenance plans are all online in the contact info.
Yeah, we did hand out some other information that's available to customers when we come and knock on the doors. We have a little booklet, in case people don't have internet access, it has everything that's on our internet site, but you can go to unitil.com/trepruning, yep, and find all of that information about all of our maintenance plans, contact information, you can even, there's an email address that you can get, it's forestry@unitil.com, it's on our website, and you can get to Dave and myself.
I had called, I'd called Unitil when that happened, because I couldn't remember the name. I met you, you were at my daughter's house down the street.
Yes.
Okay? And, and I knew they were going around and asking for permission, so when this happened, it was like, whoa, wait a minute, you know? We had this long conversation about, about the trees at my daughter's, but I couldn't remember the company name, and my daughter wasn't home to get the, you know, she had the little information. I wasn't particularly happy with how the conversation with whomever answered the phone at Unitil went. I was not happy at all.
And I, I feel that a call after your call, and talked with our customer service supervisors and director, inadvertently, the CSR rep shouldn't have said what she did or he did, so that's been taken care of, and...
Thank you. Because to call someone like that customer service...
Agreed.
Really was not. So sometimes it's good when these things happen, because then it forces us to talk about it, and we get things fixed. This is great.
Sure, and again, as you know, our role is, I've been here now five years in October, is it's an open line of communication, so when, if you were to call, or any of you, or Andy to call, it's, you know, I may not have the answer that day, but bringing in the experts that we have here is, is the reason why we have them. It's all about an education, and we want to educate our customers that we're, you know, if you're uncomfortable with it, you're suggested on the tree trimming, these folks, Dave is the local arborist here, he'll sit and chat with them and explain, this is what we're doing, and, and why we do it, and then work with the customer that way. And unfortunately, this one fell through the cracks, and we apologize for that, and...
Thank you. Thank you for addressing it.
Sue?
We did have on here, the West Townsend Substation as well.
And I've spoken to a couple of residents around the substation, and I know there was the issue, when you were doing work on it, and you had the generator, and there were some issues with the lighting and that sort of thing, and, you know, thank you so much, the, the lighting's been turned off, and they, I'm sure the residents around that area appreciate that. I went, actually went over there to one of their homes at night, and it was, it was very bright. The concern some of the residents have is about if you have to use a generator again, and way back, when was that that we talked about this?
A year ago.
Bob, Bob was on the board then, so...
Just about a year ago.
September, October 2013.
We were originally, I believe, the conversation, I went back and looked, fortunately, we have all our, our videos on YouTube, so I went back and looked, and there was, we were interchanging and talking, where the conversation was going, we were interchanging between lights and, and generators and that sort of thing, and we had talked about sending a letter to Unitil. Do you remember that?
Well, I watched it.
Long time ago. Anyways, I think then we got an update, you had stopped doing the work, and there was no more generator, so we didn't end up sending it, and it was, I believe it was along the lines of requesting that you make the commitment to using a sound barrier if you have to. Is there such a thing that you can use with a generator?
Sure, it's a, just a, a point of clarification, it's a, it's not a, it's not a generator, as you may have in the back of your house, it's called a mobile substation. So the mobile substation would be wheeled into that facility in case power or the transformer there went out, this mobile substation can pick up all the customers that are on that main line, that circuit line. So, so it's just a little bit different from an acronym and, on what that is. And the conversation with Andy was expressed to us that there was a noise concern. Yes, we did finish the work ahead of schedule from there, and, and the email conversation with Andy was, was if and when that mobile unit were to be installed again, and it was there for routine maintenance. As of right now, we don't expect that mobile substation to go back into that facility for at least another five years, because the work that we did was done. And in case of an emergency, that's a whole other situation.
Right, right.
If that whole system goes...
If it's an emergency, then...
The substation's going to go in to pick up customers, and hopefully will restore power relatively quickly. But we have, from that point, we looked out, and we're starting now to get information on sound barriers. There are some acoustical sound petitions that are out there. We're researching that right now, but it's not anything that we have a definitive, we're still getting pricing, getting an idea what it would take to actually install those at the substation, should we need them.
So, so the way that I understood it was, you didn't have to worry about the sound barrier, the sound preventer, because the reason for even having that had gone away.
Right. Every, every, so often, as, as in any company, utility, infrastructure, there are routine maintenance programs that go along, and for us, we don't anticipate having that mobile deployed there for another five years.
Sue, I think the concern, some of the residents is that, many of the residents have been there for longer than five years, they've been there for decades, and they've, there's been two incidences in the last 10, 15 years where there's had to be a mobile substation there, and it's caused a lot of disruption to their lives, and that's where I just think that they're coming, they're, that's why I want to talk about it, and, and I know, I understand they are looking into it, so, to what there is, what's being utilized, and I'm sure there's got to be something.
It's, you would think it's easy, but so far...
But it's only if you bring that piece of equipment in.
Correct, only if the mobile substation were to be deployed for a couple of weeks.
So by the time you need to deploy that, hopefully your research is going to have been done, and you will have whatever barrier you need to bring along with it.
That's what we're trying to figure out right now.
Okay.
You know, it comes down to, like, anything, cost, and...
All right, now, everybody understands, though, I think, that heaven forbid we should have another ice stormy kind of thing, okay? And I mean heaven forbid, because I went out and bought a generator, too. But if that happens, you know, we're going to just have to be used to the sound of generators, not just from a substation, but from all of the neighbors that went out and bought generators, too. So I, I think that's, that's reasonable. Yes, you had a question?
Can I have, I, if I could just say something, because I live across the street from the generator?
Sure.
Just as a couple of things, Mr. Metcalf from the show of boards of health came out into decimal readings on the two different occasions that they used the generator, it far exceeded any acceptable level of noise, and he was the one that said that, and you can probably call him on this, that an industry's standard practice is a sound barrier, when you install a portable generator, or a portable, whatever you want to call it, into a neighborhood, that that is part of the business, and that they use them in Lunenburg, and that they've used them in AF. I don't think that this is something that's pie in the sky technology, I think that noise things, this is, I, this is, you know, this is an industry standard, this is an industry standard practice, and so I just wanted to say that.
Sure.
If I, if I can.
John?
I did talk with the gentleman about that, and because of the work that we finished, to my understanding, there was not a study done, so we are not sure what...
No, there was.
Please, please, one at a time.
If there is a study, we'd love to see it, but at the point, in the email exchange...
Oh, do you want a pardon? If you could email that to me, that's great.
Oh, no, I will.
We have that.
You know what else, too? I think, just so that we all know, we brought this up to the board, we all talked about it, it's on the videotape from last year.
I, I understand, I was here, and, and what I, what I remember was that the problem went away, because they moved that piece of equipment. They did no, they no longer needed that equipment. It's not there now.
Yeah, but you know...
It's not there now, is it? Is it there?
No, you know what, it's not there now, but this has happened twice.
I, I understand.
The first time it happened, Unitil told us that it would never happen again.
Please, I understand.
The second time it happened, no one even knew what was going on in town, and no one knew at the call center what was happening either. And Mr. Denapoli told us that there was nothing we could do about it, and that this was work that they were doing on the Unitil, on the substation, and that was it. There was nothing that we could do about it.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, you are concerned about something that might happen in the future.
Because it's happened to us twice.
I understand your concern, and, and he has already said they're looking at sound barriers, so that if they need to bring that out another time in the future, they will bring a sound barrier, too.
Okay. Did he say that, that they will bring a sound barrier?
Yes, that, that is exactly what he just said.
Okay, I didn't know if he said they were looking into it.
He said they're looking into finding, well, you have to look for it before you can buy it.
Okay, I just, I just think it should be something that if they do work at the substation, and they install that piece of equipment, the sound barrier should be there before that piece of equipment.
Well, I, I would...
If it were in place.
I, I personally, I personally would not ask somebody to do something just in case something happens five or 10 years from now. Okay? I'm, I'm fine with, if you bring it in, you bring that in with it, okay? I, I'm fine with that. I'm fine with they have to look for one. But our understanding was, the problem had gone away because the, the piece of equipment had been moved.
No, I think it was one of the other selectmen who's not on the board, thought that this should be done, and it should be done in writing, it's done in 30 minutes.
Yes, and then after that...
No, 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 after that, the, the generator wasn't on when we came in. No, 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 after that, the, the generator wasn't on when we came to your meeting last fall.
No, I know.
But we brought it as an issue because for the people that live in that neighborhood, to have that thing parked next to our properties and to run for two weeks, 24/7, was a huge, huge inconvenience.
Andy?
Yeah, I went back through the, through the tape, I, I've talked to Cindy a couple of times on, on this and, and it is a little confusing when you watch the tape. And I, and I'll sort of paraphrase and, and hopefully I get it right. The, the neighbors, Cindy and her, and her neighbors wanted either some assurance from Unitil or some action from the board that would force Unitil to commit to putting up a sound barrier if in the future they come in and, and have to do similar type of work at the, at the substation. At, at the same time, we, the issue of the floodlight emerged. By the time the meeting, the last meeting took place, which was just about a year ago to the day, I think it was September 24th of last year, the, as Cindy said, the generator had been turned off, the light was still on and light was apparently on all night and it was, it was, and that's what Colin mentioned, it was quite an imposition on the neighbors. There was a sort of a, it was a conversation between the board and, and the neighbors and it was a sort of a wide ranging conversation about the, the, mostly about the floodlight, but also about the generator and, and Bob Pumond said, well, let's get an update in, in 30 days and if nothing's changed, we'll, we'll send a letter. I, I think maybe the, the neighbors took that to mean that there was going to be some definitive action from the board regarding the sound barrier, but when you watched the letter, when you, when you watched the meeting, it was really about the, about the, the motion, the floodlight.
Okay.
Within the next month, they, Unitil had replaced that with a, with a motion sensor and I reported back to the board, said that the light was off. Again, the, the generator by that point, mobile substation, sorry, had been off for more than a month and so that, you know, the, the issue was.
I remember when you updated us.
Yeah.
And, and I remember thinking we're all set.
Correct, I think the, I think the neighbors wanted, had an expectation that was different from what the board was.
Okay.
Karen?
Well, I understand they have them in Lunenburg in Air, you said. Is there something that can be installed in the substation itself and then if a generator goes in, then it's already there or is it something that surrounds?
It's installed in Lunenburg, it's not installed in any of our facilities, so I'm not sure.
Oh, it's not one of Unitil's facilities?
I don't know, I don't know what you, obviously, Unitil's policy is not to use them.
Oh, I see.
I don't know if it's an expense issue, I, I don't know why they.
Okay. Colin?
So, from this, you, we kinda are going in circles here. You said you're going to be looking into this or somebody at Unitil's gonna look into it?
Right, our substation folks are looking into some sound barriers.
And if there is a report, could you have that forwarded to them as well?
Sure, I'm not sure when that's gonna.
No.
Alec can jump into it.
Yeah, like I.
The report from the show of boards of help?
Yeah.
Okay, we gave them to you at the last meeting, we brought those to the last meeting?
They should be attached to the minutes then?
Yeah, they were, yeah, they came out in August, Bob Metcalf from the show of boards of help. We had done the same thing the last time this happened with Unitil, we got to like the same point and at that time, Unitil said this will never happen again. We, we couldn't help it, this will never happen again. When it happened the second time, I called Unitil to the call center, nobody knew what I was talking about. I called town hall, nobody knew what I was talking about, no one even knew that there was any work being done at the substation. When the engineers pulled up out front in their pickup truck, I went out to talk to them and they asked me, they said, did you come from that white house across the street? They told us that you would complain about this. So, you know, this is, this is what we're dealing with, so.
Okay.
So, my suggestion would be that we, Unitil's gonna be looking into this, give us an update as to what, like a.
Let us know if you find a sound barrier.
An action plan or something like that.
If you talk to the board of health.
In case this happens again.
If we find that, we'll forward that to you as well.
Sure, and another thing that I'd like to do is I'm gonna give, Cindy has it? Yeah? Yes, I'm gonna give you my own card, okay?
Okay.
If you ever have an issue, hear anything, please give me a call direct, I can find out what's going on for you and we can find out what the work is with that mobile transformer and how long that work's going to be going on and the why of it. So at least you know what the work is, okay? So we can do that and also that has my email address on it, so if you could email me whatever reports you got for decimal levels, that's something we're very interested in, we'd like to know what you're getting for readings out there so we know what, what the sound levels we're talking about are. So hopefully we can start having that dialogue over and forth.
I think it was like in the, in the 70 or 80 decimal range.
Okay.
You know, inside, inside houses.
Okay.
You know what I mean, this is, this isn't like a, you know.
Sure, oh yeah, we, we, we're along so we can take a look, it'd be great, thanks.
So you guys can work together and if it doesn't work out to your satisfaction, you can get back to us, but please get back to us too. Cindy, are you comfortable working directly with him?
I am comfortable working, I just really feel that we need something that I was really hoping that would come from the board saying, you guys have to do this. This isn't something that, you know, okay, well, maybe next time if it happens, after the generator's been running for two weeks and we've all had to go stay in hotels.
Okay, well, I, I don't think that's gonna.
Unitil will think about putting up a sound barrier.
I, I certainly hope that isn't gonna happen again. You have a direct line to Unitil.
Yeah, but it should be in place now, it should be in place now. And you know, for future work and future things affecting this town, this should be in place now. It's an industry standard, this isn't something I dreamed up one night while I was listening to the generator run. This is something that other utility companies use.
John, would you get back to us in a couple of weeks?
Sure.
Let us know what you find out and, and, and maybe what you would propose for, for a solution.
Sure, it may, you know, it may take longer than a few weeks because of just the substation and the grounding issues that you may have if you were to install something. Unless with our substation people, that's not my expertise, but we have that within the company and we will work, whatever we find, you know, we can follow up more on that.
Yes, ma'am.
This thing has gotten kind of blown out of proportion right now. What happened after the meeting last August here, Colin was gonna make a premise visit, which he did, and so what, and it was agreed at that meeting that a letter go to Unitil asking them to use a barrier, a sound barrier, a sound description. And when I came, all this business with, you know, what else is going on around here and they, one person indicated they might be using that substation for a resource on energy while they were doing all this other work. And I said, I wonder if that letter isn't, has gone out and could we have a copy of it so we could have it to show to anybody who comes in there and uses a generator? This letter never went out, obviously, because nobody can fa, can find it in the minutes.
No, no, the letter did not go out, I think there was a, there's obviously different understandings between what your expectations were and, and when we got the follow-up information. At this point in time, I'd like to hold off with any kind of letter because we have them right in front of us right now, they know what our concerns are and our issues are. I, I really wanna give them the benefit of going back because we did do it the last time, okay?
That's no problem.
So.
As we know, something is in place, so if another company comes in and wants to use the substation, you know, I'm gonna say, well, why didn't we take care of it before and have something, I can't say a verbal agreement because I'm not familiar enough with it, legal terminologies to, but it went by the board somehow, whether it's our fault or.
And, and that's, that's fine, we'll go forward, we'll figure it out. Meanwhile, you guys have somebody that you can contact right there. Are we okay for, how many weeks do we need? Just to give us an update?
At least, at least four weeks.
Okay, progress report in four weeks.
Could we have some sort of a timeframe, I mean, a couple of months or?
He just said.
Four weeks, we'll get.
Four weeks.
We'll get an update as to the progress. Now that does, that doesn't mean it's gonna be installed in four weeks.
No, it doesn't have to be installed, it has to be installed before the, the generator or the portable substation.
We're gonna get an, we'll have an update in four weeks.
As long as we know that, we at least have the support of the town behind this.
We're asking for a progress report in four weeks.
Okay, but you do, you do agree that this is something that should be addressed?
That we need a solution.
That's what we're, this is the process we're going through.
I, that's it, just, okay.
Okay?
Just to be, just to be clear as to what it is, in case there are reporters in the room are wondering what this thing is, we've called it 17 different things, it's a mobile transformer. What that is, is it's a, a very large piece of equipment, it's rolled in on a truck and its specific role, if you think of a transformer on the can, like the can thing you see on all the poles on that, that takes the electricity and takes it from the power that's along the line and drops it down so it's able to be used in people's homes. Same idea, but on a much larger scale, that's what substations do, they take electricity that's coming in from high tension lines and drop it down to the type of electricity that's on most poles and lines in the street. So those are great big things that are designed to run for a very, very long time, very quietly and stationary. When you need to take one of those things offline, you bring in what's called a mobile transformer, you do that so that you're not interrupting the power while you're doing the work. But because it's mobile, it operates differently, it needs to be fueled, it has fans, the fans are what cause the noise. So it's, it's not a generator per se, what it's doing is it's making sure the integrity of the system isn't interrupted because when you have an issue at a substation, that's the kind of outage that can impact, say, thousands of customers. So just, just, I wanted to be clear as to the type of device that we're talking about.
It's not a generator, but it makes noise like one.
Exactly.
Gotcha.
I can attest to how loud it is, you can hear it down a mile, a quarter mile.
Yeah, well, I just got a little generator and boy, that thing's loud.
Can imagine across the street, so.
So, no?
Okay, all right, progress report four weeks please, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Cindy.
2.5, Town Clerk Kathy Sparford requests time with the board to discuss longevity pay for Assistant Town Clerk Susan Fanioli.
She's just coming in. They didn't have any room to come in.
All right, thank you very much.
Very welcome.
Hi Kathy.
Hi, how are you?
Good, what you got?
I had put in for Sue's longevity, she's been here for 15 years and it wasn't paid and I'm not, I have no explanation or anything as to why, it was just not given to her. Excuse me?
I'm, I'm assuming it had to do with that same interruption in service?
A combination of things, when, when it was, when it was submitted, Kate Stacy, the treasurer, reached out to me, asked me if, if she should pay it if, because of the break in service and Sue's time as an elected official. And I went back and I looked at, at both the minutes from the meeting back in June and watched that portion of the meeting. And the, the request at that time was very specific, it was specific to vacation time and that the entirety of Sue's tenure with the, with the town, both her, her time as the Assistant Town Clerk, her time as the elected Town Clerk and her time since being appointed again as the Assistant Town Clerk, that it all be counted going back to August of 1999, but that it be counted solely for the purposes of calculating vacation. It was clear in the motion and so on, on that basis, I instructed Kate not to pay the, the longevity.
I have a copy of the minutes right here and it says, after more discussion, CS moved to agree to allow vacation benefits for Sue Fanioli accrued since August 30th, 1999. CM seconded it, it was unanimous.
Vacation benefits?
Right, but there was no discussion about her longevity, is my.
That's right, but, but Carolyn asked the question and I remembered this and then I also, I also went in when I saw this on our agenda and I found it on YouTube, okay? And I remember Carolyn turning to us because she wanted to make sure that the motion was accurate and she said, I just wanna make sure it's, it's right now, this is for the vacation benefit only. And Colin and I both at the same time said, yes. That by having that discussion, my feeling is it meant we're not looking at other benefits, we're only looking at vacation. That was the only thing we discussed.
That's what I, I thought.
Well, the problem that I have with finding out this way is that she's been an employee for 15 years and she should have, and she should have been discussed, not just pulled pay, but she's an elected official, she submitted payment for something. As you both know, when there's a problem making payment, no matter whether it's a salary or, or a bill, Kim writes us a note and a warrant. We were never made aware that her longevity was rejected, we could have addressed this weeks ago, but we were never made aware of it. So that's a problem that I have. I think that if we're going to, you received longevity as an elected clerk, is that correct?
Yes.
I, I mean, I think if we're gonna honor the.
Yeah, no.
She did.
She shouldn't have.
Well, she always has.
That's not.
It's part of the salary and it always.
I don't think so, I don't think so because the salaries of the elected officials are things that we don't have any control over and all, and they don't have vacation, they, and, and even you said that, I remember you saying that too, Kathy.
They don't have vacation.
No, they don't have vacation, they just take it and have to make up the work, it's a typical salary position, but.
Longevity is in my budget. And it's something that town meeting votes on, they're well aware of it, she doesn't inch, and.
Separate item in the budget.
Yeah, it's a separate item, so it, it's been, it's been there, so.
I don't think it's right, I, I think it's separate, I don't think that it was intended for elected officials that happened to be paid.
It's been discussed many times in the past.
In, in the personnel policies, it has nothing about whether it's an employee, employee or an elected official and the town clerk does get paid as an employee.
Marilyn McCracken received it, Dan Murphy received it, Sue Fanioli's received it, I mean, it's, it's been.
It's aligned, it's in the budget.
So that's, that's my only problem is why weren't the selectmen notified and I feel very badly that a 15-year employee was never notified, she wouldn't be receiving.
Well, I can understand Kate questioning it because Kate is new and.
Absolutely.
Well, I don't have a problem with that, I have a problem that no one ever approached me about it and told, she just didn't receive it. Kate went in and mentioned it to Sue, but nobody ever spoke to me, I'm the department head at this point, so there's no communication.
Okay, so now we've communicated it, I understand, but that's something that, you know, can get talked about administratively in terms of what can we do to have better communication the next time something like this should happen. But the, the issue at hand is whether or not to grant longevity pay to Sue even though she had separation. Sue, could I ask you a question, please?
Sure.
Are you collecting a pension yet? Have you officially retired?
No.
You have not, okay.
What does that have to do with it?
Well, well, because I knew that you were retiring, you, you kept saying you were retiring and, and I wasn't sure if it was.
As clerk.
As, as clerk, okay, so just as the elected official, okay. I don't think elected officials should get longevity pay and if they have been, I don't think that's the right thing and I don't think that that's the intent of the town, but.
I disagree, it's in her, her.
My budget.
She'll be getting longevity pay. It was a decision that was discussed.
I'm sure Kathy Ross's back received it.
She got longevity, it was a decision that was discussed whether it should be included as part of the clerk's pay and it was considered, I remember, I mean, I'd have to look back in the meeting minutes of the meeting tapes, but it was discussed, should it be part of the clerk's pay?
So the issue at hand though is, due to the separation, is she still eligible? Really, okay? For what she was getting before?
I, I would say, yes, she's been here 15 years full-time.
You know, when the vacation thing came up, I said, you know, this is setting a precedent and it's gonna make it difficult for the next board, whomever that is, I didn't think it was gonna turn around on me in a month.
Well, in the.
and it's going to make it difficult for the next board, whomever that is, I didn't think it was going to turn around on me in a month.
Well, in the policies and procedures under longevity pay, it says at five years of service to the town, you get three hundred dollars, at ten years of service to the town, you get six hundred dollars.
Does it say you have to be an employee?
To service.
Says longevity full-time employees. Then it says, then it changes, and at fifteen years, it says of continuous service, which I don't understand why it changed, continuous service.
So, that's one of the reasons we're going over the personnel policies, some stuff needs to be cleaned up a little. Those were written a long time ago.
Ten years?
Yes, they were.
I'll entertain a motion in the, in the interest of time, I'll entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the longevity quest for Sue Funioli from the start date of August thirty.
August thirtieth, oh.
Nineteen ninety-nine.
To honor time served from August thirtieth nineteen ninety-nine.
Second.
Moved and seconded, question Colin?
Is there any other benefits that there's, that is going to be in question?
I think that's.
Besides?
I don't think so.
I think that's it, right?
Yeah, personal time is, is different, but that spelled out more clearly in there, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. All those in favor, yes?
Just as a, just so that we're not repeating this in a week.
Why would we be repeating it in a week?
For, for personal times.
It starts July one, doesn't it?
The question is, is there a break in service?
As far as I'm concerned, there's a break in service.
According to the personnel rules, there's, there was a break in service, now the.
Technically, there was a break in service, okay? Technically, that, that job could have been posted.
No.
No, it couldn't have.
It sure could have.
It could have been posted and then withdrawn.
It was not vacant until after the election.
But, but people.
You can't post a position that is not vacant.
That isn't vacant. Or, or if you're not sure that it's going to be vacant.
It's an anticipated vacancy.
No, it isn't. Not until after the election.
All right, anyway.
See, you've created, you've created your own, your own problem.
I, I know.
I disagree, I disagree with you.
And with respect to the longevity for.
I'm thinking about other employees now, okay? I'm, I'm, I'm saying, okay, is it a break in service, is it not a break in service? What's fair, what's not fair? I'm concerned, again, about precedent here. Because if you give an exception once, you end up having to give an exception a second time, and what that in essence means is, your rules don't count.
I completely disagree, because we, we brought up the last time that these personnel policies are antiquated, and they do not fit many different types of situations, which is why they're only policies, when your only policy is the selectmen have the ability to look back, it does not address this situation, it is a unique situation. She was not an employee of the town for eight days or nine days, how, how long?
Ten, it was ten days.
It was ten days.
Well, at my discretion.
And she has worked here full-time for fifteen years.
Carolyn, at my discretion.
And it's a very bad way of treating an employee that has been on the salary.
At my discretion, I don't think an elected official should be collecting longevity pay, that's.
You probably should have brought that up at town meeting, then, because that's one's.
Well, then I will, okay? Andy?
I talked to Labor Council today on this issue, and he said that it is very clear in the statute that elected officials receive a salary, they're not subject to personnel rules, personnel bylaws, collective bargaining, any of that, they receive a salary laid out in, approved by town meeting. Longevity, vacation, personal time, sick time, as Kathy said at the meeting back in June, you work as many hours as you have to work, if you can work ten hours, you work ten hours, if you need to work sixty, you work sixty. It's, the fact, the fact that longevity was, was being collected over all, all of the years is, is really quite remarkable.
It's been past practice, and it's been in the budget every single year, Andy.
That idea is that a past practice shouldn't be continued.
It's a line item.
It's, it's a total separate line item, it's been submitted every single year.
As an elected official.
Okay, one at a time, Colin?
As an elected official, it was in there.
When I saw this, I looked at it, and originally, I didn't know I was going to vote, I was leaning towards, well, no. However, it was in the budget, it was a line item, town meeting approved it, as far as I'm concerned, that's good enough for me.
Motion on the floor?
We have a motion on the floor, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? No. And just to clarify, the reason I'm saying no is I don't, I, I'm looking at it, is I don't believe that, that elected officials.
So, when I put in for.
I am the only elected official now.
Well, you are now, you are now.
That's big, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if Kathy will want to do what I did in the future or not, but.
Okay.
But in December, when I put in for longevity, are we going to be back here? Because it's going to be pulled again, that's a question.
Probably.
And Andy has the right to pull it without notice?
But it's the same thing, in my opinion, it's, it was, it's, it was in the budget approved by town meeting.
I think it's something that I would like to entertain for a discussion on town meeting floor, and get clarification from the public on it.
As part of the budget season next year?
Yeah, okay.
You can always incorporate it into your salary.
Yeah, well, I, I think it's, I think it's important that people realize that for paid employees, that longevity paid goes toward their pension, and that's why I asked the pension question, okay, because is, it's different than, I didn't have a, a problem with the, the vacation, because that's not cutting a check and adding that check amount to the amount of money that they take in, but, to me, it's like, wait a minute, this is the salary, this is the salary that we voted on, and if the pension, if a pension is based on that salary, I don't want to be adding to that pension by incidental payments, so that, that's my concern, okay?
Part of the whole, so.
Okay, so that's done. I'm going to comply with the request that we got from Conservation to move four point two up, so we will be talking about the Conservation Commission. My understanding is that there is a.
It's towards the bottom of the package.
What number are we talking about? Four two. It appears that we have a split vote on two applicants, part of, half of the people voted for one and half for the other, and you're coming to us for a tiebreaker, is that what we're looking at?
Yeah, typically, we get a recommendation from the, from the committee or the board that, that has the vacancy, the Conservation Commission was unable to settle on a candidate for, for this vacancy. There are also a couple of letters, two letters from residents with respect to the, the vacancy, and there's a memo from Leslie. The letters from the residents are in the information that I gave you tonight, and there's a memo from Leslie that was in your packet that went out over the weekend.
Where's my Conservation Commission? You're all here? Is everybody here?
No.
No?
We're missing three of them.
My understanding is that the second person that applied, that filled out a volunteer form, her name is Nicole.
This is Nicole here.
Hi Nicole. Nicole, you're Mr. Hussey's daughter?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
How does the board feel about that?
Sim? Well, in the past, although they weren't married, weren't Stanley Vladeka and Michelle Cannon on the Conservation Commission at the same time?
They were married.
They were married, not the time they were on the.
Oh, they did get married.
They did get, they lived together, but they.
I don't have an issue with it, I just like the opportunity to interview them all.
Well, we already interviewed Veronica at the last, you know, the last meeting, so I consider that that's done. I, I'm not willing to entertain, to entertain that, I'm also concerned about what happened at the meeting, because my understanding is that, that he did not disclose until after the vote that that was his daughter. And I was pretty clear, I thought, when I talked to all of the Conservation folks the last time, that they were all here, that we've got to be very careful to be transparent in everything that we do, and that we have to be very aware of open meeting and ethics laws, and that was something that, that, that's, that's unforgivable to me, to tell you the truth, okay? I, I just, I, I'm embarrassed about that, to tell you the truth, okay? Because what I got was nodding from everyone, saying, oh, of course, of course, and then, not even a month later, I, we have that situation, and I'm sorry, I just do not think that you can put of, two immediate family members onto a board that has to make the kinds of decisions this board has to make, this is interpretations of, of, of very important laws, and, and that's, that's just a little bit too close for comfort for me. No, no, no reflection on you, Nicole, it really is not, it's not personal, it's, I know if I were on, on a board with my dad, it'd be awfully hard to, to disagree with him, because that disagreement would carry on into our house, too.
That's not the same in my family, I think my daughter disagrees with her father all the time.
Well, no, I, I mean.
She's a young, competent, educated woman, she can make her own decisions, just because they're related doesn't mean they're going to just agree on everything.
This is, this.
I, I respect your opinion totally. I actually live on Reagan Road, I'm married now, I don't live with my father, I respect my father as, as I would respect anyone else on the board or their opinion, I have an educational background and I'm very independent, and my views and my father's views are not the same views, so, I, I just don't see where the ethical problem lies, where there's no financial gain.
Has anyone called the Ethics Board?
My father made a declaration, he did call them.
He made a declaration?
And he wrote out, I, I'm not sure what.
Disclosure.
A disclosure.
Okay.
And he did speak with the Ethics Board also, after the meeting, because he was concerned that it may be an issue.
The disclosure must have been well after the fact, because none of, as far as I know, none of the commissioners are aware of that. The disclosure, I asked twice at the table at our meeting, and John would not, John Hussey would not answer me until our chairman finally asked him. You know, my feeling is that it should have been disclosed to members of the board, it was very awkward to find that out after the fact.
My understanding is too, and I could be wrong about this, but don't those disclosures have to be filed with the Town Clerk as well?
As the board of selection, as the appointing authority.
Yes, Mr. West?
I have been a selectman, a two-term selectman in the town of Royalston, and have dealt with appointments to, to various committees, and I understand the limitations in a small town of getting volunteers to serve on a board. The ethics law is very clear, there's one statement that says, if the appearance of a conflict is a conflict. Now, that's not to say that if you had one choice and no one else wanted to be on the board, that two members of the same family couldn't serve on the board, but it's restrictive, it's restrictive, these, the two folks on the board are going to have to do extra stuff all the time to make these, make these public declarations clear, so it's going to restrict the movement of the board, and it's going to restrict the, the ability of the board to conduct business. You may even get some liability on the town, real or unreal, that you may get sued for a decision in, in accused of conflict matters.
I, I appreciate your input, and, and that was something that I explained to the Conservation Group when they were here the last time, that perception becomes reality. It's not whether or not it truly is a problem, that you wouldn't be able to disagree with your father, the problem is that people may think that, and that's the point of the law. If, if people think that there could be an impropriety because of that relationship, that something wasn't done right because of that relationship, they could bring the whole thing into question. And, and that is what that law is all about, and it's done for our protection, and it, and it's done to make sure that everything is, is handled the right way.
Well, I, I mean, I agree, you want to be careful about appearance of a conflict, so that's what the purpose of the disclosure is, but there's not really any financial gain at all for Mr. Hussey or his daughter and any decisions that they would make, they're looking at conservation issues, none of them have a vested interest in the outcome per se.
Are you at all concerned about the fact that this board, this Conservation Commission came to us before? They came to us before because I think they needed some healing, because they were having difficulty working as a cohesive board. They left here, and I thought things felt good, they, they felt good. Now, we have another divisive, or potentially divisive, topic that we're talking about. I would just as soon say, you know what, I'm sorry, I appreciate it, is there another board that you'd like to volunteer for, because we need them desperately, but this isn't the right one, because of the perception of the people.
I don't, I don't disagree with you, Sue, and, and this, and I would say that in the matter of fairness, that we follow the same process that we did last time, we interviewed them and we make our decision, and that way, everybody's treated fairly. Colin?
Since this question of ethics and the Ethics Commission, I want to, I want to speak to them myself before I make a decision. I want, I want to call the Ethics Commission and talk to one of the lawyers there, so I'm getting it from the horse's mouth.
Now, you know, you know what they will do?
They won't answer.
They will not answer your question, the only thing that someone can do, they, they can't give advice, they can't give opinions.
I'm not, I'm not looking for advice, I just want to, I want to speak to them.
They can't, they can't give you an opinion, Colin, all they can do is tell, is read you the law.
And I am saying to you, I'm not making a decision about this tonight, I want to speak to the Ethics Commission.
That's fine.
I just want to say one thing, there's really two ethics questions, one has to do with if Nicole is on the board and father and daughter are together on the board, that's one issue, but the other ethics issue is the vote that was done, and there is a part of the conflict of interest law that says that if a person, because of their relationship, if it appears because of their relationship with someone cannot perform their duties in an objective manner, and if, if a reasonable person feels that there is that conflict of interest, then, then that person should not do what, what appears to be a conflict of interest.
In other words, vote.
And so, the conflict of interest was voting, right, voting for his daughter instead of the other applicant, and that appears, and even though there's, there's no money involved in that, that section of the conflict of interest law has nothing to do with money.
I know, I know. One second, Carolyn, yes?
Yeah, I, I wanted to say that I put that part of the law in my letter, I'm Laura Dole, if you have my letter there, I cut and pasted it from the state website, and I raised the issue of whether or not that was a legal vote.
Well, as I understand, you filed a complaint with the Ethics Commission, it's in the enforcement division right now, so ethics.
I didn't file.
No, I don't mean, but a complaint. No, I don't mean, but a complaint has been filed, from what I understand.
Who are you answering?
I didn't file a complaint.
Well, from what I understand, there's been a, I didn't say you, I'm sorry. That, that a complaint's been filed and it's, and it's in the enforcement. So, ethics is something that the Ethic Commission handles. We can make, you know, judgments on the law and try and decide whether we think it's a conflict or not, but the Ethics Commission is the one that handles it.
Okay, so if someone did file a complaint, they have a right to have that anonymous and remain anonymous?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay? So, that's, but if a complaint has been filed, then I'm sure somebody's going to be hearing back from ethics.
Absolutely.
So, Colin's asking if we can wait-
Well, there's been a complaint made and they're, they will make a determination, right?
Yes.
And why don't we wait and see what that determination is?
I, I think-
I have more to say.
I'm sorry.
I'm not on a board or a commission. I'm, you know, a public school teacher in another state and I don't come to a lot of these meetings, but I went to that Conservation Commission meeting and I had a few concerns, one of which was brought up, that Mr. Hussey refused to answer the question when he was asked repeatedly and then he voted. And I raised that concern in my letter. Another concern that I have, it, it's about the appearances. And I'm speaking as a person who does not go to these meetings. And I was concerned when the vote was taken and maybe it's my age and the fact that I'm a bit of a feminist and, yeah, I marched in Washington to, you know, try and extend the deadline on the ERA vote. But, um, it, it was also that the women on the Conservation Commission voted for Veronica and the men, including Nicole's father, voted for her. And it just, appearances, how did that appear to me? Again, maybe it's my age, but it almost appeared like a good old boys thing. So, we're talking about appearances and I'm being blunt and I'm telling you how it appeared to me. I, I just need to say-
Appreciate that.
And, yeah. And I also, you mentioned fairness, and I'm not sure how it was fair to have Veronica be interviewed in August after she had been attending meetings since January and then contemplate another candidate at the last minute? I don't get that and I don't see how-
Okay, let, let me explain. The reason that, the reason that it got opened up was because we had a resignation. And that resignation needed to be posted, so to speak. Okay, so we knew Veronica had already applied, so she was, her name was in the pool. But that gave other people an opportunity to also apply, to be considered. Okay? So, um-
I hear what you're saying, but again, I don't see how it's fair for a person to-
Well, then it comes, then it comes into the decisioning process. That's really what, what you're referring to then.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Well, you know, we-
What is the process? How is that fair?
People make a decision based on what's in front of them. Mr. West?
Let's put the conflict thing aside for a second. And we're interviewing job applicants, right? Um, in, in my opinion and my parents' opinion, you have one applicant who is experienced in land use regulations, in conservation regulations, has experience with all of that area of expertise. That's your expert. That's who you want to hire on your board. I, um, I don't know the other applicant's qualifications, but as Mr. McNabb was saying, you need to, to interview the applicants, find out their qualifications. As far as I understand, there's one, one candidate who, who has better experience at this than the other and that would be your choice.
I agree. Colin, I'm going to let you decide what you, I mean, you want to wait?
I want to, I'd like, I want to wait and find out what the resolution of the ethics complaint is.
Okay. And then, at that point, um, potentially interview Nicole as well?
Yes.
Do you want to interview Nicole now, so that that's done?
I didn't expect to do an interview this evening, so.
Yeah, I don't have any questions for you. But I would, I would like, even though we interviewed Veronica, if she wouldn't mind.
Hold on, yes.
Um, I would like to request that you reconsider. Just, we have six members of the board and we keep splitting. So that, and we have decisions we need to make. Um, I would like to bring up the same question of fairness that came up with Stephen Marshall. That Stephen Marshall, one of the reasons that he was so upset at not being elected was that he had been going to meetings for nine months. Veronica has been going to meetings for a long time. She got dragged through, her name's been dragged through the newspaper. Um, and she, I think it was fair to say that we all pretty much expected that she would be our next Conservation Commissioner after we had had the 10-day period, waiting period. Something also came up at the last meeting. We had a question about conservation restrictions and conservation land. To, none of us could answer the question. Veronica was able to, to the point that someone asked, "Could you come in and give us a workshop on how to do this?" I would prefer to have her on the board rather than have her come in and give us a workshop. So, we need another person and I say we need her expertise. And so, I'm asking if you would please consider electing her to the board.
I'm, I'm inclined to, to agree. Um, I'm, I'm inclined to agree. I mean, the ethics thing is another issue, all right? But if I were to look at it just face value, you know, we had a candidate, we were ready to put into that position. I, I don't have, I, I mean, just looking at, looking at the background that we have now, knowing that, knowing why, you know, Mr. Marshall had a concern. As far as I'm concerned, um, I, I think Veronica, Veronica is the best choice for that. I'm, I want this commission to be able to operate. And right now, it, it's not happening. And we, you know, the buck stops here. We got to make some decisions. If, if they, if they had a split, that's the result of that crazy meeting they had. But, um, you know, let's, let's not go there, but-
At the end of the interview process, that might be exactly the decision that we make, that she is the most qualified.
But if we put it off, we continue to put that off.
It just came to us tonight, right?
Well, well, I understand it just coming to us tonight, but they're going to be going forward and having more meetings. And they have this same situation. It's up to us to try to help fix that situation.
I don't have Veronica's resume in front of me, but Nicole does have a Bachelor of Science degree in Biology from Pittsburgh State. So, that's why I said I'd like to be able to hear their qualifications.
When's your next meeting?
Our next meeting is tomorrow.
Doesn't, doesn't help me right now.
And Veronica may be the most qualified and that is who I would choose.
You don't want to just do a vote, huh? Because I'm ready to just do a vote.
I can make the motion if you want to do a vote.
Well, it, it doesn't matter, because if neither of you want to do it, you're obviously not going to go along with it. So, there's no sense even bothering. What we got next week, Andy? I want it settled.
Uh, we could, could meet Tuesday if you'd like.
We could go over some of our goal sermon work session.
I'd rather keep it just to that, to the, to the issuing hand, myself.
Six o'clock, no, that's fine with me.
Can you do six?
Yeah.
What's my first actual class, so I'm not sure. I might be late.
How about 6:30?
Yeah, because I've grabbed it and I don't know how long it'll take.
What time's your class at?
Four, make your decision.
Oh, two hours?
6:30.
Can I make one point?
Yes.
There may not be a decision next week. You're going to be right where you are now.
Is the intention to interview Nicole next week?
And make a decision.
And make a decision?
Yes.
I'd like to afford Veronica the same opportunity to interview as well, because it has been a while.
Well, she did interview with us before. I, I would hate, I, I don't think it's fair to put her through that a second time, to tell you the truth. Yes?
I wanted to note that I was recommended by the Conservation Commission for an appointment. Steve Marshall was not. The argument was that, oh, we can't have this and it's in the paper, it's on the videos. The argument was Steve Marshall went to all these meetings and now we have to vote. And Carolyn, you were one of those that spoke strongly about that. So, now we are in the same situation and I was interviewed and I have been attending meetings. I expressed my interest in January and that started a whole long cascade of events, which culminated, I thought, in August with the votes that happened.
I don't disagree with that, Veronica. I don't disagree with that. I believe if you've been going to the meetings, that that's going to weigh heavy during the interview.
So, the, so Steve Marshall was given the courtesy of being voted up or down. You are saying that I cannot be given that same courtesy.
I can make the motion.
I had forgotten about that, the recommendation that Veronica, I couldn't remember which, whether it was Emily or Veronica who was appointed.
Emily was appointed.
I mean, recommended.
It was Veronica, but the reason that we couldn't put her in was because of Karen's resignation without a posting first. That was the only reason that that got put off.
Okay, move to appoint Veronica Cal. As a conservation member for term effective, it'll be September 23rd, 2014. Is it a three-year term?
Seven.
Three-year term, July 1st, 2017.
Second.
It moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Veronica, thank you for your willingness to serve Nicole, nothing personal at all. But please, we do need, we really do need help. How, actually, if you want to stick around a little bit. We're going to talk about charter. I could use somebody that's good with words. That's how it starts. Okay, 3.1. Review mandatory referral notice from the planning board for a site plan review special permit on the application of Bart King BK and BK LLC to construct a new 3,600 square foot industrial building with office space, garage, associated parking, and to relocate and operate an existing bus company at 366 to 368 Main Street.
Sue, before we continue, can we just have a quick recess?
Yes, we can. Five minutes hardly, please.
Sure.
That's all that's important. It's got to be in the budget.
Welcome back. Okay. We're on 3.1. This was mandatory referral from the planning board. Any comments, discussion?
Andy, was there a meeting today about this with the department heads?
Mm-hmm.
Was, is there anything out of that meeting that would help us to decide if we should comment?
The developers engineer was in to describe the project. They have been some changes to the site plan from what was originally proposed and from what is similar to what's in front of you tonight. But it's essentially the, it's the old liquor store on Main Street and the bus garage. Buildings will be torn down. New building will be constructed. We'll have garage space as well as a small office space, space for, for the bus company to operate out of, and then space for another, another office in there of some, some sort. And then parking for the bus, for the buses and for the, for the drivers and the patrons of the, of the businesses there. So it seems like a, not to speak for the planning board, but seems like a fairly straightforward proposal. There is a, there's also a special permit required from the zoning board of appeals. And...
Both lots are, are zoned the same, right? So there's no issue with that?
Correct. It's out, outlying commercial.
Okay. So, no comment?
No comment on it.
Thank you for the information. Review mandatory referral notice from the planning board for a site plan review special permit on the application of HoFAM of Cam Engineering Incorporated to open a machine shop at 8 Jeff's Street. That's a hard name.
Jeff Street.
It has a T in it. Anyway, do we have any comments on this?
I didn't know. I'd be happy to see that building being utilized.
No comment.
That's not really a comment.
Okay.
The comment is no comment.
The comment is no comment.
Okay. No comment, Andy. 3.3. Special town meeting. Review and discuss articles and sign warrant for special town meeting to be held on October 21st, 2014. Hello. FinCon. Hi. Want to talk?
Well, we did post a meeting.
Nice.
With your permission, I'd like to call FinCon. Meeting to order with a roll call. At what time?
Coming here.
Nine?
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Cindy, sit. Yes, please.
Where are you working?
Cindy, sit. Yes, I'm here.
Oh, you're here? Do you guys want to come and sit?
Not real. Please.
Oh, come on.
Will you, will you marry me?
Yes. Yes. That's what they talk about.
Do you have copies of the draft of the warrant?
Nope.
No?
We can share.
Cindy, do you want to put it up here?
Andy?
Okay, so fairly standard town meeting warrant for the fall. Twenty-one articles. Typical mix of, of financial articles and others. There's four zoning articles, couple of bylaws and statutory adoptions. So if you'd like, I can just go through them quickly, Sue. We haven't talked about them before.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure FinCon is interested in the financial ones, so...
Okay, so Article 1 is our standard prior fiscal year bills. I haven't received any yet. I've asked departments to forward anything they have to me and to Kim Fails. And so far, we've received nothing yet. So it may be that, that we take no action on this one. Article 2 is a transfer for stabilization, to put money into stabilization if we have funds available, depending on what we're going to have for free cash. And I, I should have a, at least a preliminary free cash number by early next week from Kim Fails. But if we have enough, I'd like to put a little bit of money into our general stabilization fund. We haven't put any money in there, I think, since fall of 2010. It's been, it's been a while. We've got a fair amount in there, but it would, it would be beneficial to bump that up a little bit if we've got, if we've got the flexibility to do so. Always helps in, in our evaluations by the rating agencies. Article 3 is a transfer to capital stabilization. Capital planning committee has just started to, to work the fiscal 16 process. So we'll be, we'll be looking at what we've got available and decide whether, what we're going to put aside for capital stabilization. We'll put aside some for the Spalding Roof, also for debt service on, on certain items.
I have a question on that, on the capital stabilization.
Yeah.
One of the things that I remember us bouncing around at some point, oh, God, I can't remember when, was, it felt, I just remember it felt to me like sometimes the capital planning group was, was feeling like they couldn't, like they were limited because we gave them an amount of money. And what I was wondering is, do we have to do that? Could we instead say, hey, capital planning, can you look at the needs and see what those needs are? And suggest what things in order you think might be important? And then we look at the financial situation and say, you know what? Maybe we can fund down to here. So that, so that you're not, because I always had the, the sense that they were limited because they had a certain amount of money and they felt like they needed to piecemeal it up around.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and I think it's been...
Know what, Andrea?
What you say is what we always did. We rated them, they came out, and the first, whatever number it was that you could fit into the money you allotted us was what they got.
Right, but...
So it's what you said, exactly, just in a different...
This department set the amount of money that you want to use for capital.
But do we have to do it that way?
Well, I think you need to have a general idea so people know, so you don't run into any of the same problems of, well, do you want to spend more and go out on a borrowing? Or what's, what's the town funding?
But you can have that discussion afterwards, depending on what's on the priority list.
Right.
Andy?
Yeah, thank you. I, I think it's a good point, Sue, and I think, I think in the past, we've, we've generally put about $200,000 a year into capital stabilization with the, with the idea of using that to fund the following year's capital acquisitions. I think it does become a distraction and...
See, that's how I felt.
Yeah, and, and I actually made a note to myself last year to not, to not put aside a, a set amount for capital planning because I think it, I think it does get in the way. And I think we're better off deciding in the spring as we see what all the projects are, what the needs are, and what we have available. Decide at that point what we want to fund and how we want to fund it. Do we want to, do we want to pay cash for it out of, out of either stabilization, capital stabilization, or free cash? If we leave it in free cash, we can appropriate it. Or do we want to pay for it as, as a borrowing like we did this spring? And then we can, you know, we can still move around...
Kind of depends on what's on the list, really.
Sure, it depends, you know, if, if capital planning goes through the list and they go, we got $50,000 of must haves this year, and everything else is, you know, the departments are good for everything else. First of all, I don't think that's going to happen, but just, you know, as a, as a for instance. Well, then I think we say in the spring, okay, we'll take 50,000 out of free cash and we'll pay these, we'll, we'll pay cash and, and not, not incur any debt. But I think we're a long way from...
Because priorities are priorities regardless.
Yeah, absolutely. So, but I think if, if there's no, if there's no artificial ceiling, I think it allows capital planning to look more freely at, at all of the projects that are before them.
Carol?
I know Colin wanted to have a meeting in November between finance, capital, and selectmen.
Well, we talked about it in our last meeting.
And this is really, yeah, this is really going forward for next year's budget, so I think that, that's a topic of conversation to bring up.
Well, what I'm questioning is, do we need to have this article on here?
Well, you want to put money aside in capital stabilization because you said you wanted to pay the debt out of that. Is that right?
Yeah, as we've been doing for the last several years.
So you need to put money in there. And the money is in there existing for the Spalding Roof. Do we have one more payment or two more payments? Can't recall.
I think we have, I think we have the ability to pay it off in six weeks.
In stabilization now. So anything that you put in stabilization will be going, that's where you pulled your fire truck payment. It's not in the operating budget anymore. And whatever borrowing we're doing this year is, I think that's a discussion that we're going to have to have during budget season because it's a little confusing, but...
Sue. I mean, I think you have a valid point. I think that the financing end is more for the FinCon and the Board of Selectmen, not for the committee to, to start getting wrapped up in. But I think it's, to your point, we should talk about it.
Okay. For the budget season.
Have a, you know, have a joint meeting because, and just talk about the process, talk about that.
Yeah, does our FinCon know we won't have a meeting in November?
Hey, FinCon, we want a meeting.
You want to have a meeting?
Yeah. Want to have a work session.
Is everybody on the same page for budgeting season?
Which is different than what we talked about at our last meeting, and that was to, at our goals meeting.
The revenues.
Was, was to talk about a subcommittee, if you will, for, it's really not a subcommittee.
It's a working group.
It's a working group. It would be Chair of FinCon, Chair of Selectmen, Andy, and Kim, and...
Kim, Kate, Beth Ann, and Vicki.
Do we have a date?
Not yet.
I mean, you can start, you can arrange that any old time you want to.
Preferably not election night.
We already have a selectmen's meeting at election night.
Oh, good.
Yeah. I'll wave to you.
And back to Article 3 on the capital stabilization too, depending on what we have for reserves, it's probably, you know, might be taking no action, but...
Are we going to, are we going to know the answers to all of these questions in time for this meeting? Because this meeting is earlier than we normally have it.
Right, and we, and we did, and that's a, I'm glad you brought that up, that is a valid topic tonight. We had tried to pull the meeting forward a little bit, primarily because of the Council on Aging Director thing. You know, we had talked about supplemental funding for that. We've got some supplemental appropriation articles that I'll talk about in a few minutes. We do have, we do have some flexibility. Obviously, I'd rather move forward sooner than later on the treasurer collector reorganization. But I think if, you know, where we haven't talked about the, the warrant until now and where there, you know, we don't have a free cash number, although we're close, you know, if the board was, if you preferred to move it back, we could move it back. You've got, we've got to post it two weeks, between now and, and two weeks from tonight in order to have it on the 21st. So we, we are a little bit limited.
Do we have enough time to...
We don't have numbers. We don't, we won't have, we don't usually have numbers in the warrant, but we often have a pretty good sense of what they are. Because we accelerated the, the schedule this year for, for other reasons, we are a little bit, we're a little bit hamstrung from where we normally are.
Yeah, I have a lot of questions, and plus I brought up the possibility of establishing that revolving fund, so if it did get pushed...
Well, I mean, if that needs to go on there, that's fine. But I, I mean, at this point, that's in Andy and Kim's hands to see what is the solution to that, okay? I'm not sure revolving fund is, is what we need for that, but let them figure it out and bring it back. And if it is the case, then yeah, we'd want to put it on there.
I think, you know, I think the selectmen should have a discussion on too, what we want to do with those fees and how we're going to, to offset the cost of the...
Right, but I want to hear from our accountant first and, and what the advisor... I, I want to hear from the accountant and you, Andy, on that first, okay?
Yeah. Want me to carry on?
But I mean, I mean, what, what do you think?
Well, as far as, we need to be, I want to be able to have a vote of the FinCon before the, we're scrambling right before town meeting so that the members of town meeting can ask us a question and we can actually know the answer.
So is our timeline enough to, to do this?
Can we get, can we get numbers? At least of...
Well, I think we'll have, I think we'll have numbers within, probably within two weeks. Town meeting would be, the way it's scheduled now, would be four weeks from tonight. And I understand that's, I understand that's short, and that's why I say if it's preferable to push it out, we, we can certainly do that.
Would you like us to push it out? I'm sorry, Sue, ma'am.
Well, the, the thing is this, okay? If, if you're not going to have the numbers for two weeks...
Is it going to keep pushing out the numbers?
Yeah. Well, no, I hope not.
I don't want to keep chasing the numbers.
No.
No matter when you set the date, we'll have them two weeks before.
I guess.
It's like a Monty Python...
You asked the same day as town meeting?
So, so you're, so you're pretty confident you'll have numbers in two weeks?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and when does this all need to be solidified?
Well, it could go forward pretty much now. You know, we typically don't have numbers filled in when we post the warrant. It's typically a sum to be inserted. That allows us to have flexibility at, you know, between when we post it and when we get to town meeting.
Where are you at with the treasurer collector thing? Because of, I mean, we had this, you know, personal issue happening there.
Correct. So we, we're a little, we're not as far along as we thought we would be there. So we, we haven't, we haven't made the, the progress that I was hoping that we've...
I mean, I, I'm inclined to say, you know what? Let's move it out a couple of weeks.
Yeah, and I, I don't think it's a bad idea. It gives us a little bit of breathing room.
But that doesn't say that the numbers have to move too.
Correct.
I mean, I think, I think whatever numbers we can put together within the next two weeks, it'll give the FinCon time to react to it.
Set a deadline for locking in some numbers so that we have time to...
Free cash happens.
To be set there by the end of September. Form together, we can talk about them, and if we have questions, we can get them answered.
So the, if you want to look at November...
I, how do you guys feel about it? I feel like it's rushed right now.
Well, we don't have a certified free cash number, but I think what's more important is we need to have a discussion on these increases to the operating budget. And that can be done regardless of the certified free cash number. You know, free cash you'd want to use for your one-time expenditures, but we don't know the numbers that we're trying to increase our operating budget for FY15 is.
For, for like the treasurer collector thing, I know.
We have 17,000 left in tax levy, so, you know?
Well, I, I mean, I'm looking at the treasurer collector and because of the, the situation that we got, you know, that we've, we've had, it's like, okay, we really have to get on that.
Yeah. Yeah.
And we just don't have time to turn it around quickly, you know?
No, I agree with you. You know, I'm not so worried about the things that need an appropriation that are one-time, non-recurring, but we have a few, we have the building department assistant, that's...
Well, I thought that was pretty well established, what amount that was going to be.
It's a fairly, it's a fairly modest amount.
It's like 4,200 or something like that.
Did you guys, you had that one? Something, we do have a number on?
If we were going to push it out, first Tuesday is November's Election Day, and the second Tuesday is Veterans Day.
You'd have to be that far.
So we'd probably be looking at the 18th. And I, and I have to check with Kathy, Kathy Spofford, and also with John Barrett.
I just thought you'd want to...
To make sure that they're available those nights.
That's not Thanksgiving week, is it?
No, it's not.
No, Thanksgiving is the 27th.
It's the 11th, which is Tuesday, and that's Veterans Day.
So it's, it's similar to the way we've done it the last few years.
It's a holiday, so...
Yeah. November's a tough month, but...
Yeah. So you'd have one week in between that.
Do we have to have it on a Tuesday?
I think that we need more time to...
No.
I mean, why do we have to have it on a Tuesday? We don't.
I voted for Friday a long time ago. I've been here for years.
Oh, Saturday.
I get up at five in the morning and it kills me.
Sometimes do it with Saturday, right?
Yeah.
I mean, our annual town meeting's set by bylaw on a Tuesday, but we can have a special town meeting any day we want.
Okay, so why don't we look at...
And let's change the bylaw.
Well, that's, that's for the, that's for the annual...
Everyone just calm down.
Okay. So, do you want to look at the week of the 10th anyway, even though...
Well, you could do them under the 10th. That would be the day before Veterans Day.
Well, you know what's going to happen.
A lot of people...
A lot of people will take a long weekend.
Yeah. I would expect.
So it would have to be that Wednesday or Thursday.
I am hoping for Saturday morning.
That's a tough week, though, is the election that week, too.
No, that's the week before. The fourth is the election.
This year?
And we have a meeting that night, too.
We'll leave it to Friday.
Try Saturday.
We did that last time.
Yeah, Saturday morning, that's, that's, see what happens, yeah.
Well, I don't know.
I miss all the animal shows, but you know?
Could you, could you just check?
Can't watch mighty stuff in that morning.
Could you check and, and let us know? But I, I'm inclined to just move it out.
Okay.
I, that's...
Do you want me to look at Saturdays? Check availability on Saturdays?
Yeah.
Give it a go and see.
See if it makes a difference.
Right.
I mean, in that case, you could do it the 8th or the 15th, assuming that it's a...
It's not controversial on here, nobody's, it's going to be...
Yeah, Karen just mentioned that there's a, there's a, an anniversary, fifth anniversary celebration on the, on the 8th.
On the 8th.
For the Library Senior Center.
So much for that one.
So that might not, that'd be later in the day, but might be squeezing too much into one day. But we can look and see what...
All right, well, somewhere around there.
What the 15th looks like. I think there's a clerk conference somewhere in the middle of November, too, but I'll check with Kathy on that.
Okay, so pick a day. And I'm just, I'm just saying that. I, you guys agree?
When's our thing?
Joe wants us to pick a day.
You mean moving it back?
Okay, it's up to him.
Well, you don't have to pick it now if you don't want to. If you want to, if you want me to check around on availability.
No, I just want to make sure you're okay with moving it to November.
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Colin, oh, okay, all right, that's fine then.
Like I said, I'm...
I was surprised we were trying to move it, do it that quickly with all our certified free cash.
When are we going to know about it?
Well, we'll have a rough number next week, and, and we should have, we should have the certified free cash in the first half of October.
It's going to be submitted by the end of September, doesn't it?
Huh?
Does have to be submitted by the end of September?
No, you don't have to submit it at all, really, but typically we get it done. Usually it's end of October that we get it, beginning of November. So we'll be a little early this year on that.
So, do you want to still go through these?
I think it's helpful to bring, to bring the board up to date since we haven't talked about them.
Yeah, because we haven't talked them through.
Yeah. So Article Four is, is the article to supplement the treasurer and/or collector budget, recognizing the restructuring that's happening downstairs. Like I said, we, we don't have, we haven't made a lot of progress on that because of some extenuating circumstances, so we'll be, we'll be moving quickly on that now. Article Five is a supplemental appropria...
Article Four, are you going to figure the cost of the new job descriptions into that article?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, so it would be the, it would be whatever the, whatever HRS comes back with for, for recommended grade for the treasurer collector and the 30-hour position.
Thank you.
Article Five is a supplemental appropriation for the Council on Aging Budget. Article Six is a supplemental for the veterans' benefits line. Joe Mazzara has been watching, he's, he's very good about watching the trends, and he's confident right now that, or as of last time we talked about it, maybe two weeks ago, he was confident that about 10,000 would get him through for the year, so. And this is something that, veterans' benefits are very hard to budget because as soon as somebody moves into town, they're eligible to collect from that town. There's no waiting period, there's no, there's no transition, so it can go, it can go up and down fairly unpredictably, so...
You think he's going to supplement by 10,000?
Yes, I think he's going to need another 10.
We've had to supplement that budget the last four years, like 10, 10,000 or more, so maybe during the budget season we can look at increasing, because it doesn't look like the wars are going away.
Well, I think it, it's a matter of need and how many...
Yeah, it's more, it's more driven by economics and...
It has a lot to do with economics.
Job situation for people, so, but certainly it's a, it's a conversation to have during the budget season. Article Seven is a supplemental for MIS. We've talked a lot about MIS and the deficiencies of our, of our infrastructure and...
Do we have a number on that?
Hardware and software. No, I expect a number probably in the next week on that.
Are you going to have a break?
They're installing new servers this weekend, and, and they're going to, Melissa is working on a, on a list of purchases for the remainder of this year.
Okay, so we're going to have, is this just hardware or is it hardware, software?
It'll be hardware and software.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, you, we have a breakdown about the, I know we, we increased the budget 7,000, right? That was for...
Correct. That was for hardware and software.
Yeah, so if we could have an understanding of what the last increase and this increase would be for, that'd be great.
Article Eight is the supplemental for the...
I'm sorry. You expect those that will be, be below the capital threshold?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
And, and technology, I think I've talked about this before. Technology is one of those sort of in-between type of items where it can, sometimes treat technology as a capital item, some don't, because technology ages so quickly and it seems to be aging ever more quickly, kind of like cruisers.
Yeah.
We may not, we, depending on what your infrastructure is and how you, how you run it, you may not get five years out of a PC.
Yeah, I would think, though, more of that with software than with hardware, because there are always kind of adapters and updates and new hard drives and things like that that you can do to update your machine, right?
Well, I don't know, XP went away pretty quickly.
Yeah, one of the problems that we have is that we've got, we've got so many of these so-called white box machines that have been updated and, and they're just not, they're just not performing.
Oh, oh, I'm, I'm, I'm not surprised.
But we'll, we'll have a number shortly on that one.
Oh, good.
Article Eight is a supplemental for the building department budget for the, for the clerk position.
What was the amount on that one?
I think Rich had...
42.
Said 42, or there, 4,200, something like that. I got to double check that. Article Nine is a supplemental for the town clerk budget. This is for updates to the general code.
It was 4,200.
For...
For Rich.
4,200.
For the billing?
200 for billing, yeah.
Yeah, this is just for the quoting for the new zoning bylaws?
Uh, yeah, the, they just did an update, but they exhausted all, all of that line item, and...
What is this for?
This is for our code book. We have a bound copy of, of all the bylaws, general by, everything from the charter to general bylaws, zoning bylaws, planning, health regs, general law acceptances, things like that. And so every, it varies with, the frequency of updates varies with the amount of bylaw adoptions and things that, that happen, so we just got a, I think I just got a supplement today, which probably has the treasurer collector, I mean, the collector conversion from elected to appointed and some zoning and non-zoning bylaws. But Kathy doesn't have enough in the budget to do the next round of, of bylaw amendments, so that's what this would fund.
How much is that typically?
It varies depending on the number of amendments and pages, so I think she gave me a number and I didn't bring it with me. I apologize for that.
It's not cheap, but necessary.
Article Ten is a supplemental for the fire EMS budget. This is really a one-time, a series of one-time costs associated with the move, relocation out of the, out of the headquarters for the demolition and construction of the new building. Things like moving communication lines, renting trailers if that's the direction that they go in, ancillary relocation costs like that.
Do they have a number for that yet?
I think Mark is looking at, at around 1,500, uh, 15,000, but it depends on, to some degree, on where they end up relocating to. They're looking at a number of different options. Article Eleven is a, is a sort of catch-all that I, I put in there recently. I don't think this was in the version that the board saw most recently. This is in case anything else comes up. I'm not sure of anything else that's going to come up, but sometimes they do. So I threw that in there. It may end up being a no action, no action item. Article Twelve comes from the Board of Health. They're requesting that the proceeds from the sale of the overthrow bags be put into the recycling center revolving account. It's, it's a pretty nominal amount that they're, that they've collected so far and that they expect to collect it. It will vary to some degree on, on the outcome of Article Thirteen. I think if...
I'm assuming that should be overflow and not overthrow? So...
No.
It wanted to be overthrow?
Overthrow. It overflowed.
Yeah. I'll double check with them.
Is this flow we keep talking about?
I just assumed it was a table, so maybe not.
So that will depend again on, to some degree, on Article Thirteen, which is the, which is the question of, do we honor the contract that was negotiated with Shaw's last year?
Can we reword this article? It's, it's not worded so that you can vote on it.
I've asked them for, for an appropriation language to go along with this, and the, the board has given me this language, so...
How are we going to turn that into a motion?
Well, it, it's, it's really, it's really hard because...
You can't say "or."
Can you ask them to work with council on it?
Yeah, I mean, really? You can't, you can't have an "or" in a motion. It's either, this is it, yes or no, or this is it, yes or no.
Is this more of just an exploratory question?
I think they want to know how the town feels about it.
Right, but the, the problem again is that...
I understand the intent.
Is that we...
I'm going to find out.
The problem is that we negotiated a contract to drop it to 64 gallons and, and left the budget with the assumption of reduced tonnage. The concern that I continue to have is that if we, if we stay at 99 gallons and we don't honor and, and enforce the contract that's been, that's been negotiated, we run a good chance of going over on the tonnage because the, the collection costs are, I think, $34,000 higher this year than they were last year, so...
So...
It would be much more amenable to me to have appropriation in there as well, but the, the Board of Health's...
Well, I understand it's theirs, but can, can we have council, or ask them to have council look at it, please? Because it's just a very poorly worded statement, if you can even call it that. Bylaws.
So we've got a number of bylaws this year. 14 is one that, this comes up every now and again. There are a couple of departments that employees like to get paid before they go on vacation. We can't do that without adopting Chapter 44, Section 65. And to sort of further complicate it, most of our collective bargaining agreements have, for years, had this pre-vacation payment allowance. So in order to be consistent with our contracts, we should have adopted this, this statute.
Okay, so that's cleanup?
Yeah, I hope it's just treated as a, as a sort of housekeeping matter. Article 15 is one that Kate Stacy brought forward relative to the notice requirements for what we call tailings. Tailings are unclaimed checks. They could be vendor checks, they could be refunds, they could be payroll checks that don't get cashed. The process that's in place that we have to adhere to now is very cumbersome for, for writing off those, writing off those checks, reclaiming those checks. This adoption of Section 9A would be a much more, much more streamlined notice requirement and allow us to, to process this more quickly.
And put the money back on the books.
Correct.
I like that.
Yeah. Article 16 is, is the one that you brought up a couple of weeks ago, Sue, regarding agendas and minutes.
I'd, I'd like some kind of a, to Andrea's point, at the last time we discussed it, effective with meetings going forward, okay?
You know, the thing, there's one thing I'd like to make, too, or some reference, who'd be responsible for uploading the ones that we can't do?
There's no way that somebody could...
So...
Correct.
Andy?
Yeah.
If, if there's a, a board that doesn't have any clerical support, would it be appropriate to put in there that...
None of the evening boards have access to the computer.
No, I, I understand, but I don't know if we need to have that in the motion. I think that can be just a...
Right. I think that's more of a, I think that's more of a managerial item to deal with, to see if, if we can, you know, to, to make sure that...
I mean, we're not going to...
These boards...
Say you have to do something and not give you a way to do it.
Right, right. And there's only a, there's only a limited number of administrative rights that we have for the, for the website software, so we can't give it to everybody.
Carol?
One of the things that I would like to see, and it's nice now that we've pushed the town meeting back a little bit further, so when we go to change our laws or our bylaws or anything, is to send out kind of mandatory referral type of thing, feedback from the boards and committees to see if they have anything they'd like to say or add, you know? I really feel that it would go a long way towards communication.
Well, that's what the warrant is.
It doesn't necessarily mean they're going to read the warrant until town meeting, but if we send out, then random to all the boards and committees saying this is going to be on the warrant, you know, like the mandatory referral, it's a communication.
Well...
I'd like to have a meeting, but I mean, that's too...
I, I don't, well, I mean, they can come to any one of our meetings where we're, we're talking about it, too, so...
We need to go and support our other boards, they're not, they don't need to just come...
I'm more concerned about, about time to do things like that. I mean, it's already on...
Just get some feedback. It's a good thing.
Well, it may debate it on town meeting floor.
Yeah, or you can debate it on town meeting floor. That makes it tough, too.
I mean, we have to be careful of not duplicating things. I mean, it's already here, and they can... Please, feel free to respond to this.
So you don't think we should notify all our boards and committees that we're going to put that on the warrant and welcome their feedback or let us know of any concerns they might have?
Please do.
I mean, this is the way that it's laid out. Andrea let us know, you know, she had a question, it was a legitimate question.
Exactly. So you kind of open it up, something... Somebody might say something.
But I don't want to be debating this outside a town meeting either.
So you just want to put in rules for everybody to follow it without talking to them?
It's our right to put an article on the warrant.
Absolutely. But in order to create harmony within your town government, it's a good idea to talk to people.
Okay, so who's going to do that?
Send out a memorandum to the boards and committees?
Mm-hmm.
We have a staff.
We do. One of our staff members is leaving.
Okay, I'll send out a notice if it's too difficult.
No. No.
Well...
I have a question about this particular article. Sometimes some articles just kind of have danger written on them. This, to me, has the red flag coming up that... Of that conversation on the town floor or of the little committees, including ours. Like, okay, we're responsible. I agree completely that I'd love to see the website up to date 24/7. Some stuff is able to get on there very quickly, and I'm thrilled by a lot of it. But... And I'd love to see every single committee posted meeting rather than having to come over to the town hall and read the bulletin board or find out word of mouth that there's a meeting. I'd love the website to be up, and I'd love ours to be right, and it's not. But when we're holding people accountable, that all town boards are... Multiple member bodies shall cause meetings and agendas to be published to the Calhoun Town website. But what are the means to do that? I see that question.
Well, that's what we were talking with Andrea about.
Didn't we talk about this?
Yes.
When this came up, that if a committee doesn't have a staff member, they give it to the secretary in the board?
That's just... We're just kind of saying that, but there's no need to...
There's nothing outlined.
Right.
You know, I'm responsible as the chair of the community. I'm responsible to make sure that our stuff is...
Hold on, one conversation at a time. Andrea, hold on.
I can't hear you.
No, please.
But as the chair of the community, I'm held accountable to make sure that my committee's meetings and agendas get posted to the website. But just because it's... Oh, well, don't worry about that. Don't worry about doing it. We'll make sure it gets done.
Well, what we're doing is...
But I'm still accountable for making sure it gets done. If it doesn't get done, oh, Cindy, how come it didn't get done?
Well, then you can come and yell at us because we made you the promise.
But it's a bylaw. Yandu is not a bylaw.
And we might not be here in a couple of years.
Somebody else... There's going to be another board that's going to say, well, we're...
So do you want that... You're going to say, our staff doesn't have the time to do that, and...
And they will be plowing through minutes in YouTube videos to say, see?
So, Andy, if we could put some kind of wording in there that in situations where the board or committee does not have clerical support or admin access to the website, that the town administrator shall...
Just as a... So that I'm clear on it. I think when we talked before, we were talking mostly about minutes. And it's certainly easy enough for us to say, okay, you know, FinCon, give us your minutes and we'll put them up. It becomes much more difficult if we're managing the... Or expected to manage the agendas because agendas are only posted 48 hours in advance.
I thought it was only the minutes we were talking about.
I thought it was just the minutes, but...
No, we talked about... The article talks about agendas and minutes. And I think that's... I think to Cindy's point, it would be great if people could look up on the calendar and see who's meeting this week. And we don't have that now. There's really two boards, I think, maybe three, that post on a regular basis their meeting agendas.
From a managerial perspective, we have 12 admin licenses?
I think we have 10, but...
Okay. What I would like to see is those 10 somehow become responsible, doling it out to making sure that everyone has it done. Okay? So if it means...
For both minutes and agendas?
I think it's appropriate to put both out. I mean, otherwise, people are going to look at a calendar. I mean, what I'm getting at is Cindy could just call her designated admin person and say, okay, here it is. Okay? But it's not going to happen if it's not defined who that admin is. That's all.
So I think it's more of a policy-based issue than a bylaw.
It's a managerial assignment.
It needs to be a policy. Because your admin... They're going to change over the years, the boards and selectmen. You know, everything's going to change, so you're going to think...
I think what it ends up to be is the town administrator, one of the responsibilities is to ensure that there is an admin that can support all of the boards and committees. And that means we don't have to worry about it. It's a little matrix that says, this person does this, this, and this. This person supports this, this, and this.
So you want to... As a selectman, you want to have the different employees down there be responsible or 10 different employees be responsible for all the boards and committees? Is that what I'm understanding?
No, one person for each. Yes, Colin?
I mean, I'm... The minutes, I was always under the impression we're going to be talking about just the minutes, not the agendas, but since the... I mean, I see the agendas as being, you know, talking to the town clerk and seeing if they would put the agendas up because they post them anyways, and they have access.
Well, that's another thought for the agendas. If they have admin access, too?
Yes. Yes.
Well, we could talk to them and see if they want to do that.
So it has to be submitted to the town clerk anyways?
Yeah, I mean, if it's posted the other places, she could post it there, too.
Yeah, we'd have a conversation.
Yeah, if we had a conversation about that. But in terms of the... You know, I mean, I think...
In terms of minutes, I don't mind taking that on.
As part of the selectman's office?
Yeah. The agendas are... Because of the short timeline, you know, if we're a day late on minutes, it's typically not the end of the world.
No, I understand.
But for agendas, it's a little more critical.
We still have some of our boards and committees that write on pieces of... For their minutes.
Well, we have committees that you can't find minutes for. They haven't even filed their minutes. Okay? That's what I'm concerned with. All right? And in terms of transparency to the public, if the public is out there looking for things that happened six months ago and there aren't even any approved minutes within the last six months, there's something wrong with compliance there because that's not a reasonable amount of time. Yes?
Do you want... When you say the minutes, I've been asked this before, you want all the attachments as if we were trying to file it with the town clerk, just the minutes?
Yeah, you're not required to file the attachments with the town clerk. You're required to keep them. You're required to have them available for review, but they're not required to be filed with the minutes.
Well, some of them are... You can do that, or if they're small enough, you can attach them as...
Sure, it just becomes a space issue.
Yeah.
You know, if you're attaching, you know, if you're attaching tonight's packet.
Oh, no, I know. Well, see, that was what I...
They're going to run out of space.
That was what made me ask because sometimes the FinCon has very thick packets, as do the selectmen, and other times it's just a letter.
I'd be happy with just meeting minutes.
Yeah.
Just so that people know, these are the things that were talked about, and this is what the result was.
Well, see, one of the reasons I ask is because sometimes, like, if we have a letter from the MMA or somebody, I'll say, letter received from MMA regarding healthcare, see, attached, so I don't have to rewrite what the letter said.
Well, and if he's...
But if people are interested in it, then at least they know who to go to to get that.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
That was my intent, anyway, not to have 50 pages of stuff run out of space, even on the Internet.
You've reached the end of the Internet.
Yeah, you've reached the end of the line.
So the next four are planning board-sponsored zoning articles. I won't... I haven't... I've read them, but I haven't spent a lot of time...
Yeah, I started to.
...digesting them. So first 17 is some additional definitions.
I do have one question. Under Article 17, on page four, "I understand what a tree is, includes a living tree whose trunk has a diameter of four inches, measured four and a half feet from the ground." Okay? So not a huge tree, right? Anything under that is a sapling, I would... I don't know. Not a tree yet. Okay. But trees and cutting removal, the removal of one or more trees, trimming of major branches or cutting of roots sufficient, in the tree warden's written opinion, to cause eventual destruction of the tree. Does that mean that what they're asking is before any of us cut a tree in our backyard that's of four inches or more, we have to have the tree warden look at it?
I don't know how it fits in. I assume that they mean that it's trees within a public way.
Okay.
And that they are scenic roads or public shade trees. So if it's in your backyard, it's not a public shade tree.
And they're just defining the definition.
No, I know, but it just... I looked at it and I said, uh... We're going to be issuing permits for cutting trees.
This may be another one of those ones that...
No, because I think we did that already with the...
Yeah, we had the scenic road.
The city road act got passed, which I'm surprised it didn't back when it did.
Yeah.
It's a little discussion. And we actually got past... Thankfully, the ice storm came after. We had all the trees that anybody was concerned about, we just took them all down before anybody caught us. No, after.
Because they were damaged beyond...
The ice storm destroyed every tree in front of my house. It did, very much.
Yeah.
Took all the willow trees.
I'm kidding about cherry tree. But the city road act was passed about the trees, and when it had the ice storm, so many trees just came down, it almost seems like a weird point, but now that we have the trees, and that's...
Okay, so maybe it all relates to that. That would be nice.
Yeah. So those four are all planning board articles. And then Article 21, the last article, is relative to our ground-mounted solar bylaw that we adopted several years ago as part of the Green Communities Act. We had to set aside parcels that would be available for development of ground-mounted solar systems. We adopted that bylaw for the purposes of qualifying for the Green Communities funding. We identified three parcels, but we never took the next step of actually authorizing the Board of Selectmen to issue a request for proposals for the purpose of leasing those parcels. And that's all this would do. It's just authorization for the board to issue RFP and negotiate.
One was the old...
The old landfill on Greenville Road.
The other one was like behind the highway.
Correct.
And where was the third?
And then there's a small one, which is...
Used to be the old town dump.
It was a dump on Turnpike Road, yeah. Over by MJS Metals.
Okay.
Across from there.
I knew there were three. I couldn't think of the other one.
From talking with some solar developers, two acres, that's only two acres over there, probably not large enough to be of interest to anybody. We get occasional inquiries from people. Sometimes they're just, you know, they're just casting a wide net, and they say, hey, what are your bylaws like for solar? And sometimes they're a little bit more genuinely interested, but we're unable to really move if we don't have the authorization.
This could be a source of income for the town.
It could be, yeah. And potentially could be a source of income and a means of lowering our operating costs.
Okay. Colin?
Does this, since it's a lease, does it go towards... Does it help us with the green communities?
No, because it doesn't actually reduce our electric...
Right, right.
...our energy usage. It would reduce our costs, which is a good thing. But Green Communities requires that we demonstrate a reduction in our usage, so we wouldn't be using less.
Okay, right, right. I mean, whether... I mean, that was just... I was just curious about that, but whether it does or not, I think it's... I think going green is good.
Well, I mean, we talked about it before. We designated those areas when we first did the application, and I'm glad that...
Yeah, and this one just kind of fell through the cracks.
Yeah. Good. Is that it?
That's it for the warrant. So we'll look at alternate dates.
As soon as you have alternate dates, can you shoot out an email, please? Those calendars have a way of filling themselves up.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
In regards to 3.4, given the time of now, this could be a meeting unto itself.
No. Well, all I wanted was charter committee update. I just want to know how many people have put in volunteer... Submitted volunteer applications, and how many do we need?
We created the committee as a seven-person committee. We've got six people who've expressed interest. We initially posted it last October 1st, so we've been struggling for a year to get seven members to join this committee. So... And I'll say that I don't know that everybody that initially applied is still interested. I don't know that they're not. I just, you know, with the passage of a year, I think we would want to reach out and...
Yes, Colin?
Check with some of those.
We had four very active volunteers in front of us, so they'd like to be a member of the...
I already put it in.
Oh, you put yours in already?
Yeah. I think Andrea might have, too. Yeah. See? Fifty percent right there.
Are you still interested?
Uh, sure.
That's the kind of enthusiasm we have.
Yes, I am. I can't wait.
I mean, I...
Rockets enthusiasm.
Most of the work has been done.
Well, they're pointing out a lot of things. But I think there's more that needs to get looked at.
When will we meet?
It's up to your committee.
It's up to the committee.
You can be the chairman. You'll decide.
No, I... See, this is the report that was done. You're free to take it and make your own. This is the original.
I mean, it's kind of finishing what was started already, correct?
Well, what was started, but it was a review committee before. Okay? What we're talking about here is a charter committee to look at more substantial changes than what they pointed out. Okay? And they even said in their report that it needed to happen, that it needs a little bit more tweaking.
I can email it to you if you want to.
We couldn't recruit any of the nine people that were originally on it.
Well, we decided to go forward.
Well, they're moving now. Because they're hearing the conversation.
We moved forward. We had agreed to go forward with the seven-member committee. We now have a seventh volunteer that we could... So we would be able to appoint a full...
We'll get you. If everybody else...
Fill out the volunteer form.
We will...
More of that enthusiasm.
Quick.
We went and decided to go forward with this process, the seven-member committee. Now appears we have seven volunteers. We can make an appointment. Hallelujah, praise the Lord. Let's just move forward with this. Let's not change anything. Let's just move forward.
This is good. Aren't you glad we talked about it?
Yes, now I'm glad we talked about it.
Okay, 3.5, review request for one-day special liquor license for Colin McNabb for the Knights of Columbus Church event at One School Street.
I recuse myself.
So I would move that we approve a special one-day liquor license for Colin McNabb for the Knights of Columbus Church event at One School Street to be held on October 4th, 2014, with sale hours from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Say John's thanks, you.
And Colin didn't vote on that.
I noted that.
Okay. 3.6, review request of unit tilt across altar or construct within a public way for installation of a gas service at 5 Emery Road.
Standard thing to get in before the paving.
I'm sorry, what?
We're at 3.6, waiting for a motion.
I would move that we approve request of unit tilt across altar or construct within a public way for installation of gas service at 5 Emery Road.
Second.
Thanks, guys.
Good night.
Do you have to do anything else for that? Moved and seconded.
Yes. They've moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 3.7, review and approve contract with Weston and Sampson Engineers, Inc., for survey preliminary design permitting, final design, construction documents, and bidding construction services associated with the removal and replacement of the culverts under Old Meeting House Road in the amount of $38,800.
This is one that the board already approved as a Chapter 90 project. Ed has already submitted the funding, it's been approved by Mass Highway, but we had forgot to, to do the contract, so this is just closing loop on that, on that item.
I would move that we approve the contract with Weston Sampson Engineers for survey preliminary design permitting, final design construction documents, and bidding construction services associated with the removal and replacement of the culverts under Old Meeting House Road in the amount of $38,800.
Second.
What she said, huh? Any other discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Appointments. 4.1, recycling committee, review and approve Board of Health recommendation to appoint Erica Art for the recycling committee for a term from September 23rd, 2014, to June 30th, 2017. I have a question. I just want you to know that I know Erica, she's a friend of the family, so I just wanted you guys to know that, does that, that doesn't mean I can't still-
Nope.
Okay, I just wanted you to know that I know her well.
Just disclosing. I would move that we appoint-
Erica Art.
Erica Art for the recycling committee for a term from, term effective from September 23rd, 2014, to June 30th, 2017.
Second.
It moved and seconded, discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 4.2, we did. 4.3, reserve officer appointments. Review and approve request from Chief Irving Marshall to appoint the following reserve officers. Can I get a motion on this?
I would move that we appoint the following as reserve officers. David Maza to a term from September 16th, 2014, to June 30th, 2015, subject to nine-month probationary period, and upon satisfactory completion of psychological examination. And Thomas Hill, is that how you say it?
Callum.
Hill, to a term from September 16th, 2014, to June 30th, 2015, subject to nine-month probationary period, and upon satisfactory completion of a psychological examination of pre-employment physical.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
4.4, review request of Fire EMS Chief Mark Boynton to appoint the following.
I would move that we appoint the following to the Fire EMS Department, Kevin Patterson as Fire EMS Department Chaplain with a term from September 24th, 2014, to June 30th, 2015. Nicholas Stepney and Thomas Stepney as part-time EMS, part-time Fire EMS mechanics with a term from September 24th, 2014, to June 30th, 2015. And John Toomey as EMS Coordinator at the rank of Captain with a term from September 24th, 2014, to June 30th, 2015. And Shania Appel, Shana Appel as a per diem EMT in Fire EMS Department Chaplain with a term from September 24th, 2014, to June 30th, 2015.
Second.
It was seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would move that we review and sign the payroll and bill of payable warrant out of, oh, I'm sorry.
Andrea, sorry, we were signing-
I know, I was looking down.
Nicholas and Thomas Stepney, are they on the fire department? Are they contractors? When it was first discussed, I thought they were going to be contractors.
No, they're employees.
No, they're employees.
We posted, oh, it's-
They're employees, yeah, part-time.
But are they also, if we had a fire, would they respond to the, no, okay, that was my understanding. The way the motion was made, it was unclear to me, that was all.
Right, yeah, they're only appointed as mechanics, they're not firefighter, EMT mechanics or-
That's what I, that's what I was told before, that's perfect, thank you.
I would move that we review and sign the payroll and bill of payable warrant at second.
Second.
It's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Colin?
Move to adjourn at 10:16.
Second. It's been seconded to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No meeting next week then, right?
No meeting next week, we did the work.
Good night, ladies and gentlemen.